Remind everybody that public comment is a time to make a comment, but we will not have a debate during public comment. A school committee meeting is a meeting of a government body at which members of the body deliberate over public business. We welcome the attendance of members of the school district community to view your school committee as it conducts its regular business meeting. But these meetings are not designed to be an opportunity for dialogue. Please know that while we will not be immediately engaging with your comments or answering questions, we are listening and paying attention to your concerns. During the meeting, we will be focusing on items that are listed on our posted agenda. And I think that most of you have done this, but if you would like to make a comment, please put your name and town in the chat. Please do not make other comments in the chat. We try to allot 20 minutes total for public comment, and we asked each person to limit their comments to three minutes or less. I will interrupt you at about two and a half minutes if you are, if it seems like you're going to go over. And Pam, can you hear us now? Avi, is Pam there with you?
I can hear you and I can hear her through the wall, but I don't think we can hear her.
Okay. Oh, there she is. Okay.
I was saying, yes, I can hear you. You can hear me, and we've been recording since the top of your comments about how to proceed with public comment.
Okay, great. Then I will officially call to order the remote meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee on March 15th at 6:05 PM. And we will go ahead and begin with public comment as we do. And Mr. Billsbury is up first.
Thanks, guys. Can you guys all hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, hardworking school committee members and to all watching and listening from home. My name is Robbie Billsbury, and I'd like to speak out against the proposed elimination of our district's elementary school world language program. I've been a high school Spanish teacher in our incredibly high-performing world language department for the last 24 years, and I could not love my job anymore. I love it. I also live in Essex, and I have a son, Braden, who's in the sixth grade in our district, and he's a product of our elementary world language program. To try and simplify how beneficial the elementary school language program is, the language fluency of the students in our district, and how crushing this fluency loss would be to our language program, I'd like to share that many school districts, which do not offer language in their elementary schools, can struggle to have students with a fluency level adequate enough to be able to take AP Language in their last year of high school as a senior. Thanks to our amazing elementary program and this early exposure to language structures, pronunciation, and language production, the students in our district reached this high level of linguistic and cultural fluency by the end of their sophomore year. They're ready to excel in the college-level course of AP Spanish Language during their junior year at Manchester Essex. By their senior year, our students are then able to take on the even more linguistically intensive third-year college course of AP Spanish Literature. This course has our kids reading, writing about, and discussing the great works of Spanish language literature. Best to compare it to AP English literature, except the whole thing is conducted in Spanish. Like all of our language classes, these students are doing this while completely immersed in a Spanish-language classroom setting. In our last AP Literature exam, 100% of these students scored a three or higher to give you just an idea of their fluency level. There are years where I have 25 students in this class, which is basically about a fourth of the senior class with this amazing high level of fluency. This early language exposure is not only beneficial to our highest-level AP students, but to all students. These same levels of fluency are achieved in our French program as well. So many of our former CP students and honor students have gone on to minor or major in Spanish or French because they've placed into more high-advanced courses in their college placement exams. These kids have lived abroad, and they put second language in their pocket for whatever life has in store for them. Additionally, I've run into many former students of mine who are in the trades and tell me about how they're using Spanish every day at work. Cutting our elementary world language education simply makes the type of widespread language fluency that's happening in our district impossible to achieve. At a time where a skill set in communicating in other languages was never more important, this proposed cut would leave a permanent detrimental effect upon the next generations of students passing through our school district. I strongly urge you all to please consider not cutting our district's elementary world language program. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Billsbury. Marty Flood, you are up next. Marty, are you there? Did you want to make a comment?
Sorry. Marty Flood here. Thank you. As you know, I was involved in the High School Sports Task Force with other people over the, several years ago. It had great success in a lot of things that we did. And I have recently, as you know, sent an email to many of those folks that would like to have that started up again to help a few things. I also sent an email to the board and just letting know my displeasure with the budget process and with Highland Field specifically. Not to mention the classes that we may lose or teachers we may lose. It's very disheartening, to say the least. I'm not at all happy with some of the negotiations and some other things. So onto the field itself. If you do decide to open up the High School Task Force, I think that the best thing would be to do kind of a joint effort to fix the field up. Now, it's funny, I have the GMAX report. This is, the GMAX report was given to me adjacent facilities. I don't have the head injury concussion report. I want to ask for that officially. I also heard, I went over to the field today just so I'm not stating things that are not true tonight. I wanted to see the field myself and walk it. And Luke happened to be over there doing some grooming at the field, and we walked the entire field and talked for 45 minutes. Great guy. He knows what he's talking about. Some things have to be done at that field. If you notice in the report, there's some balding areas that he's very worried about GMAX and concussions hitting those balding areas. I believe I heard through the grapevine that there's going to be an allocation to have some work done, and I think that Luke has proposed that work, replacing the line markers. As far as the football, I would call them the football line markers. They go across the field laterally, and they're every 10 yards. Those were the, are where the seams of the carpet meets. And there, you can pull the stuff apart. You can put your hand in there and feel the stone down there. Those are all not satisfactory. No child or high school football player, lacrosse soccer player should slam their head down, knee down, elbow down on that area and play on that. Now, I understand that these fields are million-dollar fields.
Marty, you're gonna need to wrap it up.
High School Task Force to be reinstated. I would like to take part in that High School Task Force. I have a ton of information that I've gained about the field, and I would like to make sure that the school committee puts enough money into this field in the next few weeks. Luke has time to get it right before kids go out there and play. That's what I would like to see absolutely take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Charlie Weld.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Charlie.
Perfect. Bonjour, school committee. Je m'appelle Charlie et je suis une senior au lycée régional Manchester Essex. Et je veux parler de l'importance d'apprendre les langues spécifiquement le français. High School Committee, my name is Charlie, and I am a senior at MRHS, and I want to talk about the importance of learning languages, specifically French. I hope that from this small speech, you can begin to see why this program is essential to appreciate someone else's language. I've been taking foreign language since elementary school and French since seventh grade. I can still distinctly remember performing part of Little Red Riding Hood in Spanish when I was very young. I think I was maybe in third grade. And I am still astounded by the fact that when I was that age, I was capable of doing something like that, not in my native language. One of the biggest things that we need to remember is that English is not the only language, and we have to allow children to see outside of the bubble our towns can put them in. For example, some of the people who clean our spaces don't speak English and may have Spanish as a native language or other. And cutting this language program further adds a certain class barrier between those who are coming in and working tirelessly and cleaning up after those who can't even properly greet them. The district loves to speak about the vision of the graduate, which should ideally be a well-rounded person who can see all facets of the world. If we are constantly pushing this vision of the graduate, we are giving a totally false impression of what we are actually producing if we choose to cut a program that literally gives children a key to the world. I don't want to bore you with statistics, but young children are in the critical period of language development where it can truly make a difference for them to be learning language. It opens the brain to higher-level thinking that can expose them to new concepts. We understand that cutting a math position and the other difficult choices that are on the school committee's agenda. But the seniors are the largest grade going through the school, meaning that class sizes are decreasing. In that situation, we are cutting a teacher. In the other, we are cutting entire cultures if we don't allow children to speak and learn languages. I thank my class for helping me put all these thoughts together and my absolutely wonderful, groundbreaking French teacher, Madame Fortunato, for always encouraging us to speak up in and for every single language we can. Learning a language has been an essential and extremely rewarding part of my life. Please welcome acceptance into our curriculum and allow different cultures to help young children's minds flourish with the gift of learning a language. Merci d'avoir écouté mes pensées. J'espère que vous les considérez. Thank you for listening to my thoughts, and I hope you consider them.
Thank you, Charlie.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Ella Chafe, and I'm a sophomore here at the high school. I'm here to tell you what an early exposure to a foreign language has meant to me. Without starting Spanish in the first grade, I would not be able to hold a conversation or understand the Spanish culture like I do today. I fell in love with the language early on, and it's now my desire to become fluent, which we know can be an asset in today's interconnected world. My exposure to a foreign language in elementary school has led me abroad this summer, and I'm going to participate in a Spanish immersion program in Spain. If I hadn't had the benefit of an early Spanish education, then I wouldn't be prepared to participate in a program at this level or in the advanced placement Spanish class I'm taking next year. Going abroad will not only teach me educational Spanish, but I will be immersed in the culture while learning world life skills. This is all extremely valuable in life. Shouldn't creating global citizenship and cultural awareness be a priority for our district? As educators and parents, I trust that you would support and promote the best opportunities for your children and students to succeed. I do realize that several surrounding towns do not have an elementary foreign language program, but this is not an excuse to eliminate ours. Manchester Essex has been known to be a highly-ranked public school system, and by eliminating the program and perhaps others to come, will Manchester Essex be able to continue to compete for academic excellence? Thank you.
Thank you, Ella. All right. Is it Mekki or Mechi or Michi? I'm sorry. Mechi. Hi, hi, Mechi. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Mechi O'Neill, and I'm a sophomore at Manchester Essex. I will also be speaking on the Foreign Language Department being cut from the elementary school and why I'm against it. I wanted to open with a quote by Federico Fellini that says, "A different language is a different vision of life." This quote appealed to me because it discusses how learning a second language can transform our lives and provide us with new perspectives. I'm here to tell you that eliminating the elementary school foreign language program is a mistake. Speaking another language does not only imply knowing its grammar and vocabulary, but also thinking in a different way. The foreign language educational system provides more than classroom learning. It establishes a safe environment in which students can engage in self-actualization and self-discovery. Students begin to reassess their own methods of thinking and view of the world when they study another language and learn about other cultures. Students develop an appreciation for themselves and those who are different from them. This is critical for a safe and accepting school community as well as a better world. Growing up, I had the privilege of visiting my mother's side of the family in Argentina every couple of years. When I was younger, I wanted more than anything to be able to understand what my relatives were saying and to be able to communicate with my cousins. After 10 years, I've observed a significant improvement in my grasp of the Spanish language. I can now sit at a dinner table with my family and understand a majority of what is being said. I wouldn't be anywhere near the level of comprehension I am at today without the basics that I learned in elementary school. On our most recent trip to Argentina, I got to see my sister, who is now eight years old, interacting with my little cousin, who is seven. Even with the language barrier, they found ways to have fun out of the love they have for each other. When I learned that foreign language might be abolished from the elementary school, I had a heartbreaking realization. I realized that just to interact and connect with our cousin, it will take my little sister twice as much time and work as I am putting into this language that I love. This isn't about me or my younger sister, however. This is about the academic future of Manchester Essex. So I ask you to please reconsider cutting the foreign language program from the elementary school as it gives students the opportunity to thrive in this complex world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mechi. Okay, Hadley.
Hello, my name is Hadley Lewanduski, and I'm also here to speak about the elementary school foreign language program being cut. I'm currently a junior at the high school and I'm taking AP Spanish Language and Culture. I have been in the MRSD community since kindergarten and went through the elementary school foreign language program. I truly believe that by cutting the program, students will not be able to succeed in foreign language at the current level they are. By starting foreign language classes early, students become more comfortable with the language, and it will not feel as unnatural when they enter middle school and high school foreign language classes. When I was in elementary school, I always enjoyed learning the languages, and it was the favorite part of my week when we had classes. I would come with my family and practice what new words I had learned in class or share about this culture in Spanish-speaking countries. I really liked learning about how holidays were celebrated in Spanish-speaking countries, as well as the vocabulary that went along with the holidays. They have carried over from elementary school and helped me throughout middle school and high school. Additionally, early into my freshman year, I went on a mission trip to the Dominican Republic and felt comfortable with my Spanish to talk and connect from people there. I signed up because I wanted to be able to help people and use my Spanish to connect with those I was helping. I believe that I felt comfortable due to my elementary and middle school classes because I had yet to complete a full high school Spanish class. Overall, I think that the elementary school foreign language program being cut will be very detrimental to students' learning and future in foreign languages. Thank you.
Thank you, Hadley. All right, Emma O'Neill.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Emma O'Neill. I'm a senior at the high school, and I wanted to share a little bit of why the elementary school foreign language program means so much to me. To begin my spiel, I guess I'll start off by talking about something that we recently learned in psychology class. And that is something that Charlie mentioned called a critical period, and we're kind of in the unit of developmental psychology. And so, as Charlie said, students at the elementary age are kind of at this critical period where they can adapt and learn a language much easier, and that puts them at a position to succeed in high school when taking AP classes. This is extremely important because, as many of you know, learning language later in your educational career can be a lot harder and more challenging. But again, I don't want to bore you with statistics because you probably are getting a lot of that. So I'll talk about something a little more personal. As my sister said before, we have family in Argentina, and I can't even begin to describe how much that side of my family means to me. And unfortunately, none of us grew up bilingual. So I kind of actually wrote my college essay about kind of feeling almost like an imposter because none of us look or could speak the language. So I'll read a little bit of that. Growing up, I never looked Argentinian, nor could I speak Spanish, which made me feel like an imposter. I did not relate to my relatives in Argentina either. I grew up communicating with them through Skype and through physical letters, and I rarely saw them in person. Visiting my family required intense planning, resulting in long periods of physical distance. My experience trying to connect with my family only made me resent my ethnicity more. My ethnicity became something that I eventually disregarded, similar to how people disregarded the extra M in my name's pronunciation. As you can see, my name is spelled the Spanish way. But through my experience at Manchester and the language classes that I was provided, I saw myself growing in ways that I could never imagine. I want to shout out specifically my AP Spanish teacher and freshman Spanish teacher, Senora Magaña, who helped me so much, not only with my language skills, but helped me connect with my family, which has been such an incredible experience. And I could never have gotten to that level or taken that AP class had it not been for that basis of learning that I went through in elementary school. And I'll read you the last part of my Spanish, I mean, my college essay, because it kind of wraps up how I feel at the end of all this.
Wrap that up, please, Emma. Thank you.
The letter M is no longer something I resent. Although I'm still growing and learning, I no longer am the girl who hides what makes her different. Now I am a woman who values every quality that makes her unique. I am proud of my heritage and my journey to reach this point. Thank you all for listening.
Thank you, Emma. All right, Martha.
All right, can everybody, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right. Hi, my name is Martha Davis. I'm a junior at Manchester Essex, and I am currently taking AP Spanish Language and Culture and doing an independent study for French. And I would like to speak a little bit about why the elementary school language program should remain in our schools. So Charlie and Emma already touched on this earlier, but it is very important to start early when learning a foreign language. It can create the foundation upon which to build higher-level language skills. Learning the basics of a language means higher proficiency later on, and it can be better for high school, middle school, and even college language pursuits. According to studies done at the Cornell Language Acquisition Lab, children who learn a second language can maintain attention despite outside stimuli better than children who know only one language. So learning a language at an early age can give students a better attention span and better ability to pay attention in the classroom, thereby letting them be able to learn better. And so for me, learning both French and Spanish in elementary school helped me decide that I wanted to continue both once I got to high school. So even though I had not taken a Spanish class in over three years, when I restarted Spanish classes in my freshman year, relearning the basics of the language was greatly facilitated because I had started learning it early on. And learning a foreign language can also provide a better understanding of English because the translation of the grammar and the words can create a better appreciation and understanding of our first language. And if we start early, then there is a higher level of comfort speaking the language early on because I know that it's difficult for many people to get over the sort of embarrassment of trying to speak in a more native accent. And if we start early, then children will be more comfortable speaking later on. And so just some personal anecdotes from me. So both of my parents speak Spanish. They are not native speakers, but they both studied it in college and were fluent at one point. So when I was learning Spanish in elementary school, knowing just even the basics of the language and being able to have small, simple conversations with my parents was so exciting and absolutely invaluable.
Please, Martha.
All right. So as Charlie mentioned, the foreign language program can open up the world to a child. So I would just ask everybody, please, to think about giving the gift of the world to your child. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Jack McCavanagh.
Hi, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
All right. So my name is Jack McCavanagh. I'm an eighth grader here at the middle school. And I just wanted to talk about a recent experience I had. So I was lucky enough to begin foreign language in the first grade. And I'm going to be honest, I never really took it seriously because I thought it was just another subject that I had to deal with and get another good grade in. But as I started getting into my older years and getting into middle school, I began seeing it a lot differently, and especially now. Me and my family recently went to a Spanish-speaking country in Costa Rica, and I was able to communicate fluent with all the different Spanish people there, and they were all very impressed with my Spanish. And I was just, it was just a great experience just coming back to the US and everyone speaking English. It just made me want to go back because I just wanted to keep going with it. But I really think you guys should reconsider it because it was a really special experience for me to be able to speak Spanish in front of all those people. So thank you.
Thank you, Jack. All right, Abby Lewanduski.
Hi, my name is Abby Lewanduski. I am a resident of Manchester, a graduate of the schools, a parent of three kids, two who have graduated, and one who is a high school junior. I'm also an employee at the Memorial School and a school volunteer. I was raised on the values of public education, and my father was even a member and chairperson of the school committee for about, I think, 12 to 15 years. My point being is that I care a lot about education and our school system. These past few weeks, however, have been very disappointing to me. I've kept quiet for several years about the fields. I've understood that budgets are hard, and that even COVID made these conversations even more difficult. However, this isn't a new issue. The field has needed to be replaced and been promised now for over five years. It's extremely difficult to hear that the funds are in a budget and allocated for a purpose and still not being used. I can assure you, we care a lot about our athletes. Over the past few meetings, you've heard from the boosters, parents, coaches, and most importantly, student athletes. The field is far beyond its useful life and now has over 150 patches. That is simply not safe. The repairs are simply going to be another Band-Aid that is both a waste of money and an additional unsafe patch. You heard the kids, those patches can both change a game or even worse, cause injury. It's time to stop borrowing from Peter to pay Paul and figure out the budget. These towns, this district should not be in this position. I would also like to show my support while I'm at it for the elementary language program. It has been an instrumental part for all three of my children. My oldest child, who's now a senior in college, is a Spanish minor and just spent a semester abroad in Madrid taking all of his classes in Spanish. I'm not sure this would have been possible without elementary Spanish. And then lastly, I just want to commend all of our students between tonight and last week for their participation. It's been really impressive to hear them speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. All right. I think that's it for public comment, unless there's anybody on the phone who's here to make a public comment.
Can I also make a public comment about the foreign language program?
Yeah, I see more in the chat, Sarah. I don't know if they're not showing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I just didn't scroll up. Yes, is that, is that, is it Fellaini?
I'm Fellaini.
Fellaini. Yes, I'm really sorry. Yes, go ahead, of course.
Okay. Hi, I'm Fellaini Duit. I'm a sophomore in high school, and I've been taking Spanish since elementary school. Speaking a foreign language is a very important quality that I think is not just fun, but it's also extremely useful. It's a very complex thing that actually creates learning mechanisms that helps throughout other subjects. Like it helps with listening and memory skills and with problem-solving and working with abstract concepts because learning a completely new language is just unlike anything else. I want to talk to you about two advantages of learning a language at a young age. First, it has been proven that early exposure to a foreign language develops positive feelings towards different people and their cultures. It's an opportunity to gain better understanding, awareness, and acceptance of differences. Students who are exposed to foreign language and cultural differences at an early age are able to have a better understanding and value for those different cultures and customs. They are also less likely to engage in racism, racial prejudice, and injustice. There is no denying of how important that is, especially in our community. The second advantage I would like to talk to you about is one that I experienced firsthand. I came to the USA when I was four years old, and I did not know how to speak English. Yet, within a couple months of preschool here at Manchester Elementary School, I spoke the language almost fluently. Thirteen years later, my parents still don't speak English without a Dutch accent or mistakes here and there. The reason for this is, like mentioned before, there's a critical period in which children have a neurological advantage to learn a language without an accent and at as high a proficiency. And that period is at around the age of 11. If foreign languages at the elementary school are cut from the program, all the children will miss learning a language in this critical period If foreign languages at the elementary school are cut from the program, all the children will miss learning a language in this critical period and never reach the high proficiency that many students reach today. I think cutting foreign language is a huge mistake and I hope that if this unfortunate event does follow through. That there will at least be some sort of alternative where students can be exposed to other cultures and languages and also be given the opportunity to get the same benefits of listening to and speaking another language and learning about a new culture which is nearly impossible to match. Thank you.
Thank you, Filini, and I'm sorry I almost missed you. And then Kristen.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you perfectly.
All right, um first of all, I just wanna um send a shout out to all the students that participated tonight. A lot of them were my former students and I'm so incredibly impressed by how eloquently you can speak in front of a group. And I also just, I don't wanna read my entire article that I sent to the paper because it is a lot of information. But I just sort of wanna speak more from the heart about why I think it's um really sad to cut the foreign language program in that elementary school. Um I have been a teacher for twenty-eight years. I've been teaching Spanish. And I have a unique perspective because I have taught children from preschool age all the way up through twelfth grade. And so development, developmentally, um I see that the children that I've taught that are young have a huge advantage in mastering the language over children that begin a language in, let's say, middle school, the seventh grade. Some of the biggest reasons for that, obviously, all the research points to um what everyone has talked about, that critical period in learning a language. I believe at the age of thirteen that will diminish. So I've never really understood why in the US we don't invest in the elementary language programs that we start so late. Our community is so unique and this program is um really the only way we're gonna get our kids to become fluent by the time they're seniors in high school. And I've seen that as a teacher who's taught in the program and a parent from a parent perspective. Um I'm just gonna read you one thing from the article that was in the cricket to the editor. Just talking about the difference between what I've seen in different districts that I've taught in. Um as a language educator, it's been my experience that children are more likely to attain proficiency, correct pronunciation, fluency in another language. If they begin learning a second language at a young age. Because I've taught in other districts, I see the difference it makes when our children begin learning a language at a younger age. After having exposure to languages in our elementary schools. Our children, or the children that were in my seventh grade classes, were joyful and engaged, comfortable with me speaking only in the target language. And had a great foundation and understanding of how language worked. They were able to attain correct pronunciation. And fluency, and they felt confident in having conversations in Spanish. All of those reasons right there are the reasons why we should not cut this program. The, the districts that I taught in. Yep, the districts, the districts in which I taught that started in seventh grade. The children were intimidated to speak and they had difficulty with basic sounds and overall proficiency. They were self-conscious and intimidated to learn a second language. So that just shows you, like, one district to another, just based on my experience. The crucial reasons why we really shouldn't be cutting the elementary language program. So I hope you can find the money somehow in the budget to um reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Um Mrs. Magania, I, I would love to say that I saved you for last because I know you're the department chair. But I will admit that I accidentally just scrolled right past your name. But could you, I would love to have you make your public comment now.
Thank you so much. Everybody can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, um I'm ready again on behalf of the World Language Department to urge you not to cut our K through sixth grade World Language Program. Um to say that students at the elementary level do not acquire language skills is completely false because language acquisition does not work in that way. Um as it is stated in the Massachusetts Framework, students acquire proficiency over extended periods of time, often taking six or more years to attain levels of proficiency high enough to be effective. In an elementary classroom, many students are replicating the sounds of a language, repeating words and learning set phrases, which is completely appropriate for that level of language acquisition. Beginning a language in seventh grade is too late due to the fact that at age eleven, the brain changes and many adolescents don't want to speak because they don't want to feel different. Because they are middle schoolers, they are more anxious about taking a risk and seeming strange by talking in another language. If students are used to speaking language in elementary school, they will not be embarrassed to speak in middle school because they are also used to it. Also, their accents are much better if they start younger and are better understood by native speakers. The elementary program is essential to our middle and high school. In twenty sixteen, the national exams were administered to the eighth graders. Eight out of twenty-nine students were awarded honors in Spanish. From that same group, twelve out of twenty-nine students took AP Spanish and scored a three or better. Eight out of thirty-one students received medals in French. Thirteen of those students went on to take AP French. These results would not be attainable by beginning world language instruction in seventh grade. To say that the only value in our elementary program is to teach culture is also incorrect as language is interconnected to culture. One cannot be understood or learned without the other. Students gain access to culture due to the ability to identify important terms, ask simple questions, and form a connection with others by using language. Bringing cultural events to the school is not authentic and will be treated as isolated events for the children to be perceived as celebrations rather than provide actual cultural understanding. Also, who will teach these cultural events? Will the schools have the money to provide funding for these events? If so, uh is, if so much is already getting cut. Nothing can compare to having a master's level teacher creating these moments of cultural awareness through language instruction. Why, as well, are, why are we looking at other districts to determine what we offer? The teachers in our area are frustrated that districts do not appreciate the value of an elementary program. Our district has been a leader in world language instruction for the past twenty-five years. Let's look to the districts that have similar programming to ours and similar performances on assessments. Schools like Sharon, Bedford, Medfield, identified as high-performing schools by DESI, also run elementary school programs, and there are a number of more. We must provide our students with an opportunity to be proficient in a second language. Please do not cut our elementary languages world program. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. All right, I'm double checking. Nobody else in the chat? Is there anybody on the phone who wants to make a public comment? Okay, then I believe that we have Diego for our student report.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so for those who don't know me, I'm Diego. I'm the student rep for the school committee. Um I'd like to say, first of all, all the students that spoke previously made my, my job kinda easy tonight. I know in the, in the last meeting that I attended, um I, I voiced my support for the elementary school um foreign language department. And I think everything that the students said in the public comment section kind of like also sums up how I feel. And like being a student representative, usually I try to share how the students feel about stuff. But obviously, you have students that are sharing their opinions in the meeting. What they said is how a lot of other people feel. So those are my thoughts on the, the elementary school foreign language department. Another thing I wanted to talk about was today, we had um an assembly in school, the high school did, about mental health. And in younger people and kind of how to cope with anxiety and stuff. The juniors and freshmen had it together and then the seniors and the juniors also had it um together. I know um there was kind of mixed feelings about the assembly. I think a lot of people thought that it was a little like intense. The woman that came in to spoke was um she, she had a really sad story. Um she struggled with depression, anxiety her entire life, and she's a recovering alcoholic and, and drug addict. And her story was kind of intense, to say the least. Me personally, I, I enjoyed it. Or not enjoyed it, but it was, it was very real. And, and I appreciated that. I think it puts things into perspective. I know some students thought it was a little intense, but I, I thought it was good. And I think it also kind of like, I guess going back to the issue we had earlier in the school year. With, with the whole Instagram account thing and, and, and kind of like mean things being said about others, I think it was really good to have an assembly. Talking about mental health and kind of those issues cuz it's, I think they're intertwined and it gets really similar. And I think that that was, I think a good way of the district kind of like listening to the students' voices about, okay, we wanna talk, we wanna have more of a conversation about this kind of stuff and we wanna talk more. So I think, I think it was good to have a, a little discussion about this and I think it got people thinking a little bit, which um I think is good. One thing that was also brought up to me, um was also brought up to me by some students after the assembly was how they're, they're not like a I guess like sometimes people don't really know who to talk to. When they're having trouble during the school day or if they're just having a bad day or if they're sad or upset. And I know sometimes like the fact that there's only like a few guidance counselors or like a few people that they felt they could talk to. Was something that I guess I was made of, made aware of today. Like I, nothing, that's something I didn't really think about. So that's definitely something to consider. And I think that, that's kind of all I have to say today. I think.
Diego, that was, that was a great report. Thank you. And thank you for sharing all that information about the assembly.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Yeah, of course.
Diego, can I ask you one quick clarifying question?
Yeah, of course.
Are you saying that we need to help kids better understand the resources that are available to them, like the guidance counselors and the adjustment counselor? Or from today's presentation, you got a sense of who is available? I just wanna make sure we follow up correctly.
I guess like maybe just letting kids know that more that they have someone to talk to. And also like, I know even the guidance counselors have said it a few times, but like, even sometimes like just being able to walk in and talk to someone if they're available, even if you haven't like made an appointment. I think a lot of people are really hesitant to go to their guidance counselors. For one reason or another. I know, I, I, I totally take advantage of it and I see my guidance counselors a lot with any questions I have. But I think it's important to let people know that even if it's a small question, just like one little thing that they're worried about or whatever. To kind of make them aware that there are a lot of people in the school that um, that they can talk to.
Does anyone on school committee have any questions or comments for Diego?
I think, this is Eric. I think the only follow-up I would have is if this speaker, you know, had a session today. Is there someone right there who says after the presentation, like, if anyone needs to speak to anyone, we're here, we can talk to you?
Actually, yeah, that um, that, that was mentioned actually before the presentation that if anyone, i- if the presentation brought up any, like, you know, anything that the, that the student thought that they might want to talk to someone about, that the guidance counselors were like there and, and ready to talk to people. Which um, which I thought was good. I'll definitely say, the presentation was very intense and I think that some people were kind of like upset by it a little bit. So I think it was good for people to know that they could talk to someone if they needed to.
Thanks, Diego.
Yeah, of course.
Who's on the call too? If there are specific follow-up questions for her.
Anyone else have questions for Diego? Okay, did, wait, who did you say is on the line too, Pam?
She is on the line if there are any uh follow-up questions for her. I know she sent a communication out to parents.
Yeah, as a high school parent, I got a communication and I had a conversation with my kid who had a very similar story to what Diego said. So I think, I think it's hard to talk about intense things and I think sometimes it's important. So it's.
One more thing I, why will I, sorry for interrupting you. Um but one thing that people were saying was that we had this kind of like very like intense, I guess, discussion and presentation. There wasn't really much of a follow-up to it in class. So it was like, we learned about this woman's really tragic story and like thinking a lot about anxiety and depression and stuff of that nature. And then after that, there was never really a follow-up to it. It was just kind of like going back to normal classes. And I think that was kind of like weird and sometimes like a lot for some people to kind of like hear all of this stuff about this woman who went through all of these horrible things. And then maybe bringing up thoughts about themselves and they just weren't able to talk about it with like their peers or in their classes. Like I think that was difficult, even for me. I, I kinda wanted to talk about it and I didn't really get the opportunity.
Yeah, that's really good feedback.
Can I ask a question about that, Sarah? Do you mind?
No, go ahead.
This might be for Diego or also for um secondary part for, for Trish. So this was presentation-based, not discussion-based. I mean, you had two grades at a time. So, so you're saying that that wasn't the case. So I guess my, my question for Trish is, is that something that um, that is planned already for maybe another day in the week to regroup? Or, or is that something that's not really a part of this? And if so, is that something that could be adapted this week since we're hearing the need?
Yeah, I'm definitely hearing the need um from what Diego has said. And we had done this program um back in winter of twenty twenty, right before COVID. Um and we had a tremendous feedback from both parents and students. It was also done at the middle school level. So knowing and understanding the needs of our students currently and the number of students really struggling with some mental health issues. We thought it would be a great idea to bring it back. And um the speaker today, I, I agree with what Diego said, was um pretty intense. She, she had, you know, she had struggles. Um she was from, she was a high-performing student in her family. And, you know, struggled throughout a number of um, throughout years. And um our hope was to allow students to know that it's okay to reach out when they have mental health issues or they're struggling in any way to their guidance counselors, their adjustment counselors, or another trusted adult in the building. Um but if they, we feel there is a need to do a follow-up, um certainly that's something that we can do. Um I think the guidance counselors did a great job today interacting with students, as did the um faculty where needed.
Okay. Thank you, Tricia. Thank you, Diego. All right, moving on. I have a very short report. I just wanted to say welcome to everybody and we have a really full agenda tonight. We aren't voting on a lot of things, but we look forward to some interesting conversations. I wanna let, well, I wanna thank everybody who commented and especially all the students who commented tonight. You guys did an amazing job. You are always so articulate and it's so great to hear from you. Um I love having our student rep on the PML, but I also love it when all the students come. And so I hope that you will continue to do that and be involved. Um it's great to have you. We, uh, I just want everybody to, to understand that nobody on this board wants to make any cuts. We really, we need to be fiscally responsible to our towns and they are asking us to uh, to reduce the budget. And therefore, we um don't really have a choice right now. So we'll be talking more about the budget and the field uh later in this meeting. In the meantime, we hope that everyone will attend your upcoming town meetings and continue to let your town officials know that you can, that you do support our public schools. And as we move forward, I hope that we can turn our attention toward planning um for the future of our schools. And so uh with that being said, we have our consent agenda, which includes minutes from January twenty-fifth and February first. And vouchers number ten forty-four, ten forty-six, and ten forty-seven. Are we missing ten forty-five? No, I'm confused. Anyway, could I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved, Mark.
Thank you, Eric. And um
Second.
Forty-five, ten forty-five, ten forty-six, and ten forty-seven. Oh, that second was ten?
Yep.
Okay, is there any discussion on those vouchers or the minutes?
I have something. Um so I sent a few questions and since we have such a full agenda tonight, I don't think we need to get into all of them. But just about some of the expenditures. I'm wondering, Pam, if you could speak briefly, I don't know if you got my email about that, to the, the nursing situation. Just, just a quick update. I noticed the, you know, the sub uh line item for the middle school nurse and was just interested in an update. Are, are we back to three? Where, where are we at with that?
Sure. We are at, um we have our two regular full-time nurses and we have a contracted service nurse filling in at the middle high school for an extended leave of absence. So we have full coverage in all buildings, but uh one is through a contract while two are traditional. On, on-staff school nurses.
Okay, all right.
I would have to say, given the opportunity to answer the question, I'll be brief because we do have a ton on, is, is Nicole and Joanne are doing a wonderful job of managing our big projects district-wide, planning for the future and supporting that individual in the more traditional school nurse role. Where she um is doing a great job uh covering the medical meet. So just a big thank you to Nicole and Joanne. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I'll put a pin in the rest of it for another meeting. Thank you.
All right, any other um discussion on the warrants or the minutes? All right, um Eric? Alright, um Eric?
Can I just clarify? Sorry, you did say ten forty four to ten forty seven.
Ten, oh, you know, ten forty four got cut off on the page that I I photocopied. I knew I was missing something, so it's ten forty four.
Four, five, six and seven. Thank you.
Forty four, ten forty five, ten forty six. Ten forty four was mostly technology, ten forty five was retiree payments to Medicare, ten forty six was meals tax. And ten forty seven was some invoices from um the memorial school building, et cetera. More information will be included with the minutes if anybody wants more detail on the warrants.
It's in the minutes and we've also um at, I think. School committee suggestion or public suggestion, we've started posting. Um, a memo, which is a summary of the vouchers that is on that school committee presentations and materials page.
Excellent, thank you for that.
In review.
So vouchers ten forty four, ten forty five, ten forty six and ten forty seven in the minutes from January twenty fifth and February first. Eric?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. That's the consent agenda. Okay, do we have any subcommittee reports? I know we have so many report reports.
We have just a quick one.
Okay.
Um, facilities and I know it's on the agenda tonight anyway, but also Chris and I were able to attend the uh recent on the eighth um. Uh, MSBC meeting and the memorial school is again coming to completion. They're working through a punch list at this point is my understanding and. Um, on time and under budget and so conversation is beginning to take place about how best to utilize. Um, the balance and and what to do with that moving forward. Um, and then we have a upcoming uh facility subcommittee meeting uh being scheduled for next week, but that's on the agenda, so I'll I'll hold for that.
Awesome, thank you.
We are.
I'll just say we we have not met as a uh finance subcommittee since we've not had a collaboration meeting since our recent vote, but our um. Our, I can say, having heard from a couple of the Essex uh town officials, it was uh appreciated that we were able to pass a budget that worked um. Knowing what we have to face at town meeting and uh we're continuing to try to move forward uh collaboratively.
And I don't believe policy committee met and um negotiations is scheduled to meet, but we have not met. So we can go right into the superintendent's report.
Thanks, Sarah, and I'm going to ask uh for a little bit of your advice. Michael's on the line, so my report is consists of a report out on um the covid issue at Memorial School. An update on our strategic initiative and an introduction to Mike Leitman, who is our consultant. Um, for diversity, equity and inclusion and then just three little public service announcements, so. Do you, would you prefer that we have a conversation with Michael and then get into the covid piece or start with covid and follow up with Michael?
Um. I I don't have a preference unless Michael needs to go.
We're about fifteen minutes over where. Forty five minutes over where we originally thought the start time might be, so if everyone's comfortable with it, um. I would like to introduce him and let him um speak, answer your questions and then we can move into the more business. Like pieces of our agenda.
That sounds great. Let's do that first.
Okay, so I think Michael, you're here. There you are.
Yes, I am.
So um, as you know, our strategic plan includes a focused um. Strategy on diversity, equity and inclusion, uh starting with the school committee's anti racist resolution. Um, in the summer of twenty, we've been working to build our capacity to move the district to become more um equity focused and inclusive. Uh, I think in our conversations, you know, I felt like we needed to do some pre work before we um started uh implementing. Uh, outcomes or started working toward implementation of particular outcomes or changes in the classroom. And Michael has started started coaching us last summer, working with the leadership team throughout the fall. And now we're expanding to include faculties. So throughout February and March. Uh, Michael has been introduced to both the secondary and elementary faculty joint um joint meetings at both levels. Um, and he is helping us use his process um for building our cultural competence to prepare to be. More knowledgeable and better prepared to help lead students um to a more inclusive outcome. So I just wanted him to come tonight. He's been introduced to everyone um inside the organization and you are our guiding board, so I'd like to introduce him to you tonight, let him. Speak with you a little bit about his process and how he's helping coach us. And then as we move into the summer and start to plan for our workshop. Um, I'd like to invite him to workshop with us a little bit, so you can have the benefit of how he's been working with the rest of the staff. So, Michael, the microphone is yours.
Pam?
Yes.
This is Angela. Michael is trying to log back in. He was having some trouble with his camera, so hopefully he'll be right back.
Oh.
Hello.
Hello.
I just said, I I think I missed a missed a wonderful introduction uh as you, Pam, as you were introducing me and also good evening, everyone. Uh, have you ever been waiting to get on a call? And when it was your turn, you your camera didn't work? Anybody has that happened to anyone ever? Okay, I got I got one person. Looks like Kate is my only friend on the line tonight, uh but I I I signed off and signed back in. Uh, Pam, I think you I think you're ready for me to go, so I'll just jump in. Uh, what a pleasure to be. Okay, what a pleasure to be with you all. One, uh when technology works, it feels real good. Uh, when technology doesn't, uh you begin to sweat in places that you don't want to be seen online, but it has been such a pleasure to work with the. Uh, district this year. Uh, we started uh as Pam probably shared in my introduction. A lot of times organizations, when you hear about diversity, as soon as you hear diversity, you go right to some of the uh usual suspects. Um, I'm very aware that I'm uh joining as a black man and that's part of who I am and there are many other aspects to who I am. Who can hear that? Okay, uh maybe Katie is still my friend. Uh, I like I do a little a bit of a call and response when I talk with folks because in the Zoom world for over the past two years. We've been waiting, mics have been working, it's been kind of quiet, some people have been excited, some people have been arguing and so the call and response is really important. And so I just want to say as we we've worked together, uh thinking about uh strategic planning, not just around diversity, but how we build the whole school community. And I've been really uh excited but also encouraged by what I've seen um in the district and part of the way that I work and the the folks who work on my team. Uh, we start working with the superintendent first because we think it's really important to have a sense of the vision of the school. And then as we begin to have a vision of the school, we also talk with the senior leaders. And we spent a number of times, I've been on campus, I've been to both Essex and Manchester, I've been to all of the schools, I've been, I've seen some of your students. Um, I've done a couple of PD days and I I imagine in the climate that we're in, very often. Uh, consultants come in as a kind of as a drive through. They come in for one day, then they're gone and you have a lot of different questions that aren't answered and there's no really a way to follow up, kind of like the. Young person online Diego was talking about having people to go to. And so when we think about equity and inclusion, we're thinking about the idea of individuals, we're thinking about relationships and we're also thinking about systems. So individuals, relationships and systems and the way we've been talking with the district leadership and also with faculty members is that. There are many aspects of who we are. Um, I on the call, I think there's about fifty one or so people. And so everyone comes with a different aspect, so you might come in as uh someone with your leading identity might be one of politics or religion. Or your race or your gender, all of those pieces are critical and we have to figure out how do we build capacity? As we're working with young people and also adults. Uh, a a quick note about that, sometimes I I've heard people say, Michael, let's do the, let's do work just with students. And I think that's really important as being an educator for this is my thirtieth year in education. Um, I look quite young except for this gray on my chin tonight. Uh, but in the thirty years that I've been doing work around diversity, I believe also. Excuse me, that adults need the support as well. And I I imagine that many of you have been in workshops where you were looking at different aspects of diversity. The I think the unique opportunity that we have um in in Manchester is that we're using leadership. Uh, the faculty, staff and hopefully parents and students. And we think that's a really powerful model and so what we've done is we've built capacity, so we talk a lot about communication styles. Um, some people are very uh go getters and some people are more reserved. That is an element of diversity that we've been working on. Uh, some people identify a- as in their race and their gender and their political perspectives, all of those are part of the mix. And so as we've been working with the leadership team for uh really since the summer, we've wanted to make sure that we get a chance to understand. Uh, who they are as individuals, uh what their relationships are and how they run systems. I had a, I, the other day I was did a workshop with the middle high school and I brought my son into to the session with me. And as we were in the auditorium, they were probably, I think, I felt like I was running a bunch of laps because it's such a beautiful auditorium, but I had to go up and down and up and down. And one of the things that I really appreciated about the faculty late in the day is that they were engaged. And so let me just check in with you. Have you, how many people have been to a workshop in the last two years where you were there, but you weren't fully there? Don't raise your hand because we're recording, right? Right, right? Uh, but I'll I'll raise my hand for you. I was amazed because oftentimes faculty members uh and you know, as one of my former leaders told me, to be captain obvious in a predominantly white environment. You say diversity, everyone is running for the hills, like I don't want to be blamed, don't tell me it's me, my approach is not shame, blame or complaining. We have enough of that in society, we have enough uh models for what is not working. And so I felt very positive about the reception that I got, not so much about what I did as a as a leader. Um, I saw what was already in place and so absolutely is there work to do around gender, race, uh sexual orientation, ability, learning styles, politics and really religion. Absolutely, there's work to do. I felt very positive about um what I saw in terms of being receptive. So I I guess um I know Pam was trying to introduce me and she has uh trying to embarrass me, put up all this information for my for my bio. I discovered that uh sometimes I go to sessions and I read the person's bio. It's nice to have a bio, but I really want to know, uh does a person care? Can you hear that? Does a person actually care? So when I'm working with a faculty member, do they know uh like when we were at the middle school, I was with John and. Uh, the other day at the middle school and we were talking, he and Jen about uh how do we engage each other? We know what are what are the different, what are the emotions that cause us discomfort when having conversations about difference? And so when we're talking about two uh two areas, Essex and Manchester, I've also, we're talking about two groups of people coming together. And how many of you have discovered that when you bring people with different perspectives, sometimes there's some complexity? Anybody? Let me see, let me look through this. Okay, I I got Ken. Ken is the only person with me tonight. Thank you, Ken. I'll send you, I'll send you a thank you later. But when we're talking about complexity, sometimes it's not uh is it complexity because I'm a black man? Certainly there's complexity enough because someone's a a white man or someone's a part of LGBT community or someone's a Christian or someone is a Republican or someone's a Democrat. All of these pieces of who we are come together. And so when we talk about equity and that's one of the things that the leadership team has spent a lot of time thinking about. Equity is not uh everyone being equal. I'm five seven, you wouldn't be able to tell because you know in these Zoom rooms, everybody looks taller. Uh, but uh if I if you give me something that is for someone that's six foot, it may be the best garment, but it won't fit me. And so when we're talking about equity, we want to understand what do each of our students need. I'm reminded of uh when I visited the elementary school at Essex and both Manchester, uh I was doing one of, I went into one session. Where kids were learning about time and I I haven't taught in the classroom in a little while, but the young people just their energy brought me in. And it wasn't about who I am as a black man, absolutely is that a part of who I am, but I was a person. And it was about the teacher who prepared them to be welcoming. So when we're talking about equity with developing individuals. We're working on developing relationships and also we're working on systems and I'm I'm very excited about that because. Uh, absolutely, we've heard about critical race theory. Is that important to talk about? Absolutely. Uh, we've heard about um uh. White fragility. Is that important to talk about? Absolutely. Uh, we've heard about Black Lives Matter. We've heard about everything in that's possible. If we start there, I think we might have missed a few steps. My work is very foundational. I use a cultural competence framework uh that comes out of the work of Paul Peterson. He did a lot of work with multicultural counseling. What do we need to be aware of in any situation? Um, how do we actually feel about that? Is the second part, what knowledge do we have? And beyond knowledge, what skills can we implement? And then the last piece is practices. So we use that five prong approach as we work with the leadership team and also the faculty. And we've also come alongside with the work that they've been doing with emotional intelligence. So I think that you all are situated in a very powerful way to do impactful community development. And I I think the last thing I'll say, uh, not, I don't want this to be a lecture. I have uh family members who are in higher ed, so I won't. Uh, I love them and I'll let them do the lecture. The the work is saying, how do we use emotional intelligence? Uh, which the World Economic Forum says is the top, one of the top ten skills of the twenty first century. How do we use emotional intelligence, cultural competence and conflict engagement? Those are the three prongs that we've been working with the administration team with, we've been working uh with the faculty. Um, and I'm also excited about having opportunities to engage parents and not just Michael Lawrence Eitman about me being the product, but us. Collectively building together because there's a lot of support um and expertise in the community and that is something that superintendent. Um, has been thinking about, so I I I'll stop there. I I'm very excited to get a chance to meet you all as we navigate the complexities of the day. Uh, we're building capacity and um you certainly have access to me and I'm looking forward to working with you all a little bit more.
Thank you so much, Michael. That was a great introduction.
Oh, I planned it just that way. That's exactly how I planned. Now I'm just.
It was perfect. It was great. It was great. I think it's going to be great. Um, this, do we have time for Q and A Pam or what do you think? A little bit, okay, if any school committee members want to say hello to Michael or ask a question, go ahead.
Hi, Michael. Oh, good.
Oh.
Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, no, I just wanted, Michael, I want to welcome you. Thank you for speaking up. Um. It's great to have you and and your energy and as you said, there can be a lot of challenging questions at times. I've jokingly said um. To Sarah that the even just talking locally, the metaphorical swamp in the middle of Manchester and Essex can be bigger than the literal swamp. So it's great to hear your thoughts and your perspective and kind of what you're bringing to the district in terms of understanding each other and how to kind of. Make the connections and start foundationally and go from there, so thank you.
Yeah, Ken, and I'll quickly just give a thought about that. You you brought a thought up for me. One of the things that we see in this work. Um, in my background of executive coaching and mindful facilitation is sometimes we try to fix a situation. Anybody, don't raise your hand because we're live TV and if you fixtures out there, we like, let's fix it. I used to be a fixer and I discovered that uh if I get better at engaging a situation, there's a higher probability, at least for me. Where I can come out where there's some equitable perspective, so Ken, a part of what we're doing is saying, how do we take folks who are already educated? Um, articulate, thoughtful folks and help them to navigate some of those complexities as we're engaging as opposed to fixing, so thank you for a warm welcome.
Thank you. I'm learning our, I'm learning more tonight. This is great.
Oh, I'm glad.
Hi, Michael. My name is Teresa. I just have a quick question. Welcome.
Thank you.
As a as a practical matter for the school committee where we're elected and we come and go, you know, and this is a, this is a um process that's going to take place over time, I'm. Interested in, you know, how we sort of fit in in this process and and do we, is there part of this where we're more involved, less involved, or we just generally need to know what's going on and be supportive of the efforts?
Yeah, Teresa, thank you for asking that. I think it's really important to have the school committee to be a part. Um, so having, uh, my parents have a small school in New York City, uh thirty eight years, I taught there for ten years and I've taught in higher ed. And what I've discovered always, when you have people out of the loop, you always are creating opportunities for complexity that you don't want. Um, I have in some of the work that I've done in um in New England, I've worked with school councils, I've worked with some some mayors. Because we realize that everyone has a stake in it and if we close the school committee out, uh as lovely as you all are, I'm sure that there are opportunities that you can create. Uh, for greater complexity, so I we I'm looking forward to uh doing some specific work with the school committee. Uh, and uh because things cycle out, just like in our professions, we are always redoing some of the work. And so part of the hope is that we will be able to do some training of trainers where uh it will create the the capacity in the leadership team. Uh, and I'm I I'm saying this on on live TV here, sometimes the consultants will uh make themselves indispensable. And I think I'm indispensable most days of the week, but my three children will tell you uh otherwise. If we tool folks on the the school committee to have some of those competencies, we're not asking you to be diversity professionals. Because that's like if you're a lawyer, or you're a doctor, or you're a homemaker, you've taken years to learn how to do that. My job is to say, how do we put systems in where we're not trying to show you what to do? We're trying to not make you what to do something specific. You can actually not even agree. I've had many people not agree and I, I have that element in my family. I have folks who are on opposite sides of the political perspective, opposite sides of the religious perspective, opposite sides of cultural perspectives. And either we'll do what we've seen in media, it's we'll destroy, or we'll find ways to come together. So what we would, to answer your question specifically, we would do some specific training with the teams that will help them to um, help us to, to walk along together.
That's wonderful to hear, thanks so much, I appreciate it. Look forward to having more interaction.
Thanks.
Anyone else on school committee want to say hello or ask a question? Okay, I think we're really looking forward to getting a chance to meet you in person and to have you work with our teachers and to help us all build some cultural competence. I think it sounds amazing.
Yeah, Sarah, as I'm getting off, you said something important that I just want to make sure folks, as, as you listen to speakers, you kind of do your searching and like trying to, who is this person? I would just encourage us to note, there are many terms for diversity. One of them is cultural competence. Some people say that, you know, cultural competence is uh, we can't ever get there and I, I 100% agree. Some people say cultural humility. For us, the work is not about, is it a specific word? As much as can we come to um a sense of agreement about where we can go together? So you've been very kind this evening and I know you'll have a full agenda.
That sounds great, thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
All right.
It's Michael for making the time. We'll talk soon.
Okay, thanks Pam, have a good night.
He has really been um amazing for us and pushing our thinking. And he mentioned fixers and I had to jot it down because we, um, the, the leadership team collectively is a set of implementers. They can take something and make it happen and figure out what, and anticipate problems and find solutions and work around. So what we've been working really hard on is preparing for a journey and realizing that the work begins with self and that understanding ourselves and what we're bringing into the work is going to be critical in helping the rest of the team in our, our fabulous faculty get on the path for their personal journey so that they can in turn help the kids. So I just can't say enough about how Michael has challenged us and really um supported us in the hard work of, of learning about ourselves and how we need to get better at what we do. So I made a joke at the last session, he's going to be with, I said, with us indefinitely and for, to infinity. So um, this isn't a one and done, uh, we have a multi-year commitment and we're going to continue this work slowly but surely going forward. And like I said at the outset, um, the goal is to have our summer workshop for the school committee to be with Michael, so we can start to develop our collective uh vision and understanding. So thank you, Michael, I know you're a busy man.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
That's kind of, that's the inspiring work we're doing and that's a piece of what we're working on in terms of the strategic plan. Uh, my next report is a little bit more of the nitty-gritty of um what has been given to us to deal with this past week, which is um the COVID issue at the Memorial School. So I know you've received several communications from me um trying to keep you up to date on what we're seeing and what we're doing. And I'm going to start at the end, which is today, we've had zero cases reported. Um, and we're going to take that as a very positive step forward. Um, but what I wanted to do is just run down very quickly the timeline for you. I know we have Joanne and John on the line. I don't think, I'm not sure Pam Crean was able to make it, she's the public school nurse. Um, in Manchester, she's been a key contact throughout. And I know, um, I've sent you some correspondence from Tanya Culpits and um Martin Hahn, who serve on the Board of Health for Manchester, just giving you their impressions of where we are and kind of the guidance we're working within and the tools available to us. So I don't, I, I don't think everyone needs the entire backstory, but you know, beginning on um Friday the 4th, we had our first case of COVID reported. Um, you know, as always, Joanne lets us know um when she has a report. I think important to understand is that we are under the new set of guidance. So we have no current local mandate for masks, regional mandate, town mandate, state mandate. There's no, we, we were mask-free as of February 28th. Coming back from vacation, I think we all anticipated we may see some cases. I know um the medical professionals continue to say that they aren't surprised that we've had an escalation here. For the purposes of how we needed to deal with things, first case report came in on Friday the 4th. It seemed innocuous, then we went into Monday, we got seven additional cases reported. We started to have uh some conversation about how we should react. I know Joanne reached out um to public health and to the school doctor. Tuesday, uh, when Joanne reached and John reached out, we had nine more cases. So we went directly to the DESI guidebook of how to respond to a COVID escalation. And we went um right from there. I know we contacted uh Board of Health again. Um, just to let them know that our numbers increased um nine after the seven from the previous day. So the numbers are going up more quickly than we had typically see. Um, we ran through the situation with the local nurse, the public nurse here in Manchester. We contacted the Department of Ed per the guidance um to report to them an increase and run through potential options of what we could do. Um, we let them know how we are, how we, how we were approaching it and what was recommended to us at the local level. They concurred, um, both organizations stating there are no, you know, you're working without any mask mandates um in an era of self-reporting and self-guided, you know, self-regulation um in terms of managing COVID. The, you know, what you want to do is continue to encourage people to mask. Um, if they're concerned about spread, make advantage of the vaccine, stay home when sick. I'll go through the list that we sent out. It took us a couple of days to get the state epidemiologists to respond to us, but DESI had recommended that even though they're concurring with the local guidance that it can't hurt to reach out to the state level and get yet another opinion, um, professional opinion on what we're doing. Again, it took me a day or two of phone tag uh to sync up with them, but by that point, our numbers were a little higher, so we were able to report um kind of latest head count and then walk them through uh the list of recommendations that we had put out to staff. Again, they concurred and said, stay the course. And I know we went from that point um after issuing kind of the district document that kind of summarized the state of affairs and how we were approaching it and what we recommended families to do. We just kept going on a daily basis of touching with the school to Central and school to uh the school doctor in the local Board of Health. I know that Joanne speaks multiple times a day, most of the time with her partner in Essex. Uh, I believe there was contact with Erin, who may be on the call tonight in Essex as a check-in. And we just kind of kept repeating that day-to-day, watching the numbers, calling our contacts, making sure we weren't missing anything. And that kind of brings us to today where we're, you know, we're hoping that the zero is not in, in isolated situation that we start to see the normalization of things. So in addition to really just monitoring, following the DESE guidebook and checking with people who are responsible for making determinations about public policy uh and disease, we had a couple of things that played in our favor. Um, I know John set the place seating at three feet apart. Um, we're hoping that helps the audience. We follow the DESI guidelines, you've seen this list before. And then other things that we um, we, we gleaned from the call was that, you know, just the idea that we should refrain from any large group activities within the school until the number subsides, we've been adhering to that. I think it was good luck, the lunchroom, um, maintenance team was hoping to reset all of the lunchrooms over April because it, it's going to be a monumental undertaking for them to move furniture all around the district. So the lunchrooms um in all of the buildings are still set up as the single seating at three feet. So that remained in play all week. Um, and I know John mentioned to me that he had suggested to the classroom teachers that they um try to keep uh classroom interactions to three feet as well. Our enhanced cleaning protocols are still in play. And I know Joanne is providing um active lists to teachers of students who are now returning from being out on um a COVID issue uh in who fall under the requirement to wear masks when they return to school for five days afterward. So that kind of is how the last week or so played out. What we were doing on a day-to-day basis and the numbers that we were seeing um at the time. Uh, we wanted to have an act, after-action discussion to see if there are any questions that we can answer. I think, you know, the biggest thing we got, we got for feedback is, you know, why can't we be more um more directive with the guidance that we're providing, requiring masks, uh, making people take home tests and test at home and report in. And I think in asking those questions to each of the different bodies that we interacted with along the process, it's just very clear that we are in what they continue to call the endemic stage. And while that's the medical term of where we're at, the policy term of where we're at is really um personal management of reporting, monitoring your um symptoms, determining when um, when and if you need a higher level of testing. So we as an agency have been taken out of the management of individuals' COVID situations. I know there's questions probably for the town, we've learned in the process, the only PCR tests are reported to the town, so we did feel some questions about discrepancies between our numbers and the town of Manchester's numbers, because the town of Manchester's numbers were extremely low compared to ours, but they're only receiving PCR test results. The, what we learned is that the at-home self-reporting doesn't factor into any count um anywhere. It's just um a notice to us that um they've had a, a positive report at home. So in the end, um, I do think we did the best we could with the situation that we had. And um I'm happy to answer questions and that's what Joanne and John are here to do as well. And I think Erin, Erin, did you make it on the line? I didn't see your name, but maybe you're on a phone line.
I don't see her.
Uh, Erin, Erin Kirchner emailed and said she wasn't able to make it. All right, so um, thank you Pam for running that down. Um, and did people on school committee have questions or want clarification in the wake of our COVID outbreak? Teresa?
I've, I've just got one, um, there's, there's just been so much in the past week. I know I've emailed this, but um I was really dismayed and I remain dismayed. Um, I just want to really clarify, there wasn't contact to Erin or anyone from the Essex Board of Health. Um, official contact made from the district until, I believe, yesterday. Um, and I tried to bring that up repeatedly. Um, I happened to text Erin as a friend to get her opinion um a couple of days in and, and she hadn't heard from anyone. And so I recognize that in the moment, you know, we're following the specific things that DESI says we have to do and, and trying to work in the crisis. But now that we can look at it and say, what are we learning for future? We're a small district with two member towns and I feel that um it would have been appropriate to reach out officially from someone in the district to uh both towns' boards of health to at least let them know what was going on, because as you said, the numbers aren't reflected in the town boards of health things. And so um in future, I would really hope that that is an official communication that is made and um that both towns' boards of health are, are brought up to speed so that it doesn't, so that our Essex Board of Health doesn't hear in a random text from me, what are your thoughts about what? It's a bad look.
Teresa, it's Joanne.
Hey, Joanne.
Hi, I want to let you know that I did hear from Erin on the 8th. Um, she texted me to ask how I was holding up. And I told her things were going okay, trying my best. That was our communication on the 8th. Usually when we have something like this happen in our town, unless it directly affects an Essex student, we go right to um our Board of Health. I've had contact since COVID started with Erin whenever we had families that were associated. So um we were in contact, maybe she didn't get the full um story, but it sounded to me by her text to me, asking me if I was hanging in there, that she heard it.
Yes, she had heard from me that, that same day, that just asking about it. So, and I don't necessarily mean as, I, I don't know who needs to do it. I just need to know that it needs to come from an official channel, that we're dealing with a thing, that's all.
Now?
Pam, I'm, I'm concerned, Pam, you mentioned that um, you know, when we had the last update from the health team before um any of this, that we had already anticipated an uptake in, in cases after February break. And my recollection of that conversation is, is the opposite, that we were assured that February break would have no impact on, on numbers within our schools and that we should not be concerned about spread after February break versus keeping masks on for another week.
I don't recall that, Kate.
And, and thank you, Ken. And, and I would just add that at no point did anybody mention that there was a large group gathering planned um the week after February break. So now we're looking at these two factors, February vacation and a large group gathering. And I'm wondering, moving forward, when we are anticipating upticks in cases, are we saying that there will not be large group gatherings during those, those times when we're anticipating upticks in cases?
Um, I have to just, I disagree with Kate just a tiny bit. I think what we heard was that whether we were masked or not masked on return from February vacation, they didn't really think would make a big difference in whether or not we saw an outbreak. Now, in retrospect, hindsight is 2020. It seems like perhaps had we been masked, we might not have seen an outbreak, but that's kind of water under the bridge or not. So the question is then um, moving forward, and I think I have kind of the same question. Is there anything we would do differently moving forward if this happened again? If we saw a bunch of cases and it seemed like there was some spread going on, what would we do? Is there anything that you guys would do differently? Do we need to maybe think about just writing down what the protocol is so that, you know, I don't know if there's a new variant or whatever, we get another outbreak, um, we're just all on the same page? And so it sounds like one thing um to consider would be making sure that both boards of health are notified right away as soon as we notice that there's an uptick. And another thing would be to consider um putting, uh, hitting the brake on any large group events. But my question, so my question for Pam is uh, is there anything you would do differently?
Probably not going to like my answer, which is, I think I've heard repeatedly from the folks at the state level and the local level and people with epidemiology backgrounds, that this is the way it's going to be going forward. And I don't recall that they, my recollection is that the statement was, we should anticipate that the, there will be these upticks and little outbreaks in the process of adjusting to the post-mask mandates and the self, um, the self-responsibility. So I, you know, I don't really make, I don't make the rules around COVID. I rely on people with other greater expertise to advise. So what we heard was that what we were doing is what we should be doing. But if at the local level, if the committee wants to institute a policy for us to follow and engage the local boards of health in determining metrics for us to use, then we will certainly implement that going forward.
I don't think anybody has said anything about a policy or setting up metrics, but I just think, like, just knowing what the protocol is, I think is really helpful.
I think we would need that to satisfy some of the requests that we have. That's all.
Yep.
Kate?
I have a question just to clarify um that our priorities as a committee. I was under the impression that our priority was to prioritize in-person learning as much as possible. Um, I think that that's a conversation we've come back to over and over again. And so if we're running into a situation where more than 50% of a grade level is at home for a week because they have been exposed and they have contracted COVID, presumably through a school spread event, being that this is centered around a grade level after a large group gathering of that grade level, I'm wondering if we are fulfilling our obligations and remaining our priorities as a committee?
Yes, I'd like to respond to that, Kate, if you don't mind. Um, I appreciate the different perspectives people have and throughout this, I've really been focused on, yeah, we have to be together. Um, frankly, jokingly had talked about. I'm frankly jokingly had talked about, you know, when the first throw up bug was going to go around and that actually caught our family and our elementary school student the week beforehand. And I guess I'm somewhat with Pam. I, I honestly didn't know between Facebook and everything else, if there was more throw up bug go around or, or the COVID outbreak in the past several weeks. So I, I rely on and forgive me Joanne, because I always put the burden on you as well as the other health professionals, like Pam says, the health professionals that we work with to really advise us in times like this where we're moving backward, I guess somewhat more normal circumstance or at least less deadly or concerning or new and threatening. So that's like, I kind of defer to those with a bit more expertise on what we should do. And I know that may be a cop out from school committee. I'm sorry, Joanne, but that's my take on it.
I was just going to weigh in. First of all, we have 68 students in fifth grade. We had 40 cases of COVID in one adult. Out of those 40 cases, 12 of them were in K through four. So we didn't have 50% of the class. I think we, it was a bizarre week. We had COVID. We had this stomach bug. We had a virus that's going around that looks like COVID, but isn't. Everyone that had COVID tests and PCRs tested negative. And then we have the cold. I, I think we had a lot of everything in the building. But thankfully today, our numbers were zero. So I'm pleased.
I think what we learned too through this and talking with people who are doing this statewide is there are no longer official statistics. Everything is a self-reported outcome. So there is no verification of whether or not the test has a follow-up test. So of course we take people at their word and basically we're just recording call-ins of at-home tests. Well, we're, what we assume are at-home tests. So I think where some people are getting, you know, and I understand it because we're kind of, we're coming out of an overly controlled environment. But there isn't that mechanism in place any longer where either we contact, trace it down, or the town comes in or Desi dispatches a group to come in and research the situation and do the contact tracing to identify kind of ground zero. I think we've made rational assumption that the fifth grade play spread the thing around, but they also asked what, you know, is this a post-vacation week for you? Do you know of other activities that have gone on this weekend? And I think at the town level, we've heard you don't want to rule out and, you know, you can't, you, you can make some assumptions, but we can't make a determination. There are sleepovers. There are, you know, youth sports. There are lots of things going on. So while we know we pretty much presume that the fifth grade play was the player in this. I, I don't know that the school is the organization that, that should be analyzing and making the public health determinations. That's why we turn to the outside organizations who have the expertise and they're in turn relaying to us that they're not doing that anymore. Advise people it's to what is available to them to self-manage and then you know, continue to, to move forward. And if you feel like I'm mischaracterizing what we've heard, John and Joanne, please jump in.
No, I think, I mean, I think that's the, the tricky part is, I think Sarah may have said, you know, hindsight is 2020. And sure, if we could hit rewind and go all the way back, you know, knowing now what we know. Yeah, maybe we would have halted all activities in the district, kept masks on for two weeks, you know, athletics. You know, there were some, you know, big basketball games, you know, kids on buses going to events. You know, DECA, like, you know, all of these things that were happening at the same time. You know, so we, we could have put a halt on all of those things, kept masks on for a couple of weeks. I think we have to give ourselves a, a little bit of grace here because things are changing so rapidly. We were talking after winter break about how we felt very comfortable holding the winter concert right before, right before break. We came back from break and I was saying to Joanne, there is no way we would hold a winter concert this week, right? When we came back from winter break, it was like, you know, the, the, the new variant was, was hitting and it just was a very different environment. And so I think what we have to do just as leaders is we take, you have to take a snapshot of the current situation, the, the knowledge, the data, the experts that are around us and, and make decisions. And unfortunately we don't have, you know, we don't have a rewind button. So I think that's what does make it tricky. Everyone that we've talked to kind of through the process has said that we're, we're doing everything that we can. But you know, coming, coming out of February vacation, we had some major changes in our protocols. And we, you know, we're kind of given the charge of, you know, let's, let's get kids back to, you know, a normal school and let's start, you know, getting back to normal life and normal activities and welcome families back into the building and, you know, you know, the end of year events and that sort of thing. And, you know, I, it's, I, I, I semi, you know, joke a little bit. I, I did, I called Tricia and I said, Tricia, how like, you had the basketball game the same night, like, how was it the, the, you know, the musical that, you know, that has happened at? You know, because they were, you know, equally big, you know, gatherings. As, as Pam said, you know, I was at Denver's indoor sports tonight coaching indoor soccer and, you know, it's packed with kids from kindergarten through, you know, 12th grade playing soccer indoors. You know, basketball, youth, high school, you know, has been happening for, for months. And, you know, even in those situations, okay, so you have, you know, the mask that's around the chin because it's near impossible to play a sport indoors with, with a mask on your, your face the whole time. So, you know, yeah, if we, if we could hit, hit a rewind button, you know, we could, we could probably have taken a left instead of a right, but, you know, kind of here we are. And it is promising that the numbers seem to be trending in the, in the right direction. But, you know, we want to be cautious. I, I did get a lot of great ideas from, from parents who reached out. One of them said, you know, she said, I have like this idea of, you know, the school is a mask friendly environment and that couldn't be more accurate. We have a lot of staff members and kids that are wearing masks during the day. Our kindergartners went on a field trip today and, you know, I had the teachers, you know, encourage the parents. You know, we're going to be on a bus altogether. So it would be a good idea to, to, you know, send your child with a mask. We had the windows open and that sort of thing. So, anyway, we're in a, in a transition phase and transition phases are often very uncomfortable.
All right. Can I ask a question?
Yep.
It sort of relates to Kate's, but, but taking on, but off of what John was just saying also. So, I mean, we, if we had hindsight and, and could rewind, you know, yes, we could have taken a different turn, but what I'm hearing is that we wouldn't have because the information that we're being given is this is what we're doing and this is what's to be expected. So my question is, going forward, knowing that, all right, maybe it wasn't 50%, it's like 43.75% of the fifth grade, you know, contracted COVID, how is this impacting learning in the classroom, knowing that we're trying to catch up? How is this impacting the classroom experience? How are they planning to help students make up from that? What supports are in place for families and, and what does that look like? Because if what we're saying is we are to expect these kinds of things to happen, this is going to happen throughout the whole K-12 experience or pre-K to 12 experience. And so what can we learn about? How to, this isn't one or two kids out for a couple of days. So what are you guys doing, John?
Well, so that, I mean, it's going to sound strange, but in a way it was a benefit where it was concentrated, where the teachers could kind of not take a pause, but just kind of slow down a little bit. So I know last week they, you know, they, they kind of, they, they worked on going deeper in some areas as opposed to introducing new content so that when the kids came back, you know, they didn't, they didn't have to do all sorts of, all sorts of catch up. So that's kind of the, the approach that, that, that we took just because it was concentrated in that grade. But, you know, this is, this is a, you know, there are a lot of kind of fallouts from the pandemic phase that, that we as educators and parents and, you know, children are feeling. And this is, you know, we had a year and a half of, you know, very untraditional learning. You know, thankfully we were creative and the, and the kids were able to kind of stay on, on track. At least according to, you know, the data that we've looked at. But, you know, things, this, this is an impact of, of the, the time that we're in right now, the, with the, the medical situation.
Can you remind me on what the stay out period is now for COVID? It's a much faster turnaround.
Oh, she's muted.
Muted.
So it's five days. You start counting either the day of the first symptom or the day of the positive test. They can return on day six as long as they're feeling better and can tolerate a mask for day six through 10.
That's a full week.
Yeah.
Or potentially, yeah. Well, thank you. I, this, I mean, I'm, it makes me interested thinking of other questions. What happens if we have this during an MCAS week? What happens if, you know, how this impacts playing forward? So I hope that learning from this, all of those discussions are taking place to really anticipate these kinds of events.
I think something like the MCAS week is actually much simpler to solve than I think the emotion, helping people with their emotional reaction to this. My guess is the Department of Ed would simply extend their testing window. If we were to experience something like that, that's why they're on.
It's an example. Yeah.
But I feel like we've been so lucky and dodged so many bullets up until now, and then we just really got hit hard with this one. Anybody else have any wrap up comments? All right. Thank you, John and Joanne and all of the Board of Health people who helped make these decisions and work through it. And it's hard. I know we're all doing the best we can. So we appreciate it.
Thanks, everybody.
All right. And thanks Pam for that detailed COVID update. And I, I'm going to just knock on wood and hope that we don't have to ever have another one of those. But who knows?
Yeah. And I'll leave it in saying if the, the board wants to explore a local policy that sets some ground rules for how you would prefer we respond, like if, if it's the committee's desire to have a trigger for a masking requirement, we can certainly put that in. But will we?
Is there a group who wants to do that? And like, does the policy committee want to convene and put some ideas together? It sounds like.
I don't think without, without support from the, the Board of Health or the health team, that, that that's really even a possibility. I'm just, I mean, I, I guess I just continue to be confused as to why it wasn't recommended by the health team, but I'm not on the health team and I'm not a doctor. So I will defer to that guidance.
And it does seem like the school committees that have put in new policies around masking or COVID that mostly the new policies just say that they defer to the superintendent and the administration to follow the directions from the boards of health and the Department of Education. So I don't think there's much for us to do as a committee in terms of making a policy at this point. I think we just need to trust everybody to do the best they can, work with our health professionals and hopefully avoid any situations like this in the future. I think, you know, if any, it's, it's a reminder to us all that it's not over, right? It's still there. It's still going to affect people. We still all need to be careful. We need to take our personal responsibility and be careful. And move on with it.
Book service announcement is that we do have a calendar update coming up. We have now gone over into, we've had enough snow days to go into another week of June, which will require us to update the calendar to reflect Juneteenth and push our last days of school out Tuesday. I believe it's the 21st. Typically we try to hold until mid-March because sometimes we get that big mid-March snowstorm that lands us with another day on the calendar. So.
One year we had an April 1st day, so I think you want to be careful there Pam.
Doesn't look like it's going that way with these 60-degree days. So we're going to try to get that out because people are asking for it by end of this week or beginning of next week. So that'll get published to, that'll get sent out as an email blast and put up on the web and pushed out through social media that there's a calendar update. And I think the other thing is, I don't know if Tricia is still on the line, but we have made Kami Moner the athletic director official. It was posted and a committee convened to turn that interim position into a full-time. I think she has done an amazing job and I know everyone is really excited that she's going to be a permanent part of the team. And the other great question that Kate had sent along is, we did use those Esser dollars to hire a math interventionist and the individual started just after February break and is technically considered part of the new model that we'll be talking about in April, but he's a district-wide interventionist who is currently assigned to address the caseload need at Essex Elementary. But as we move into next year, we're going to come to probably that April 1st meeting and explain how we're moving with equity in mind to a, a district approach to provide interventions and assigning caseloads to our readings and math specialists. So that's listed as one of those reorgs on the chart and we're really excited about that. So he's getting his feet wet and I know he's doing a, a great job and people are really excited to have his expertise.
Pam, I have one more thing for your report, if you're not going to say it.
What am I forgetting?
The DECA kids.
The DECA kids, yes. Well, cheers to the DECA kids who went to, and, and you know, John makes a great point. We had, at the same time we were dealing with Memorial, we had our, our DECA group in Boston competing successfully, replacement and further competition and our basketball team was traveling all over the straight state, but they were eliminated. So our kids continue to impress and, and do great things. And I was really impressed by the kids tonight. I want to say that off the top. They're good reminders of the work we do and why we fight hard for the budgets and why we do the work that we do. So we'll land, we'll land on that positive note. And if there are other questions you've asked that I've forgotten, just remind me.
All right.
Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on. Decap is next, I think.
Yes, I think so.
Let me pull that up. So we have Angela Bick and Allison Collins here tonight. They were responsible for working on the revision of our district accommodation plan. They're going to explain to you a little bit about what it is and how they've structured it. And I will pull up the file so we have a point of reference. So I'm going to turn it over to Allison and Angela.
Thank you Pam. And thank you all for having Allison and I with you tonight so that we can talk to you a little bit about the district accommodation plan. I'm going to start by just giving you a little definition of what a district accommodation plan is because I'm not sure about what your background is around these plans. So, you know, district accommodation plans, or we refer to them fondly as D cap, are part of Massachusetts general law. And I think Pam has pulled up the document so that you can see the actual language of the law. But basically what this regulation is stating is that all public schools will adopt and implement a plan that assists teachers and administrators in their efforts to accommodate the diverse needs of learners in the general ed classroom. And they do that by providing appropriate services and supports. Plans like this take into consideration both the academic and social emotional needs of the students. So in essence, the plan articulates the continuum of supports within a district to reduce learning barriers and to provide more equitable access to the curriculum. And that's a lot, a lot of words to say that there is a huge continuum of learners in any school district. And we believe that the best way to educate children is in the general education classroom. And so district accommodation plans are developed to help children access the curriculum at wherever their entry point is. So Pam, if you can scroll down a little bit.
I don't know about other people, but I can't see.
Yeah.
It is great.
Looking at the.
Thanks Sarah. I thought it was me.
Nope.
I'm, I'm sure it's me. Just give me a second and I will stop sharing.
There it is. There it is.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not the. Give me one second and I will get it. Give me one second and I will get it.
It's not the D cap, though.
Okay, she's working on that.
Moving fast, hold on.
Just a brief intermission while we pull up.
Um, I can tell you that.
Can you see it now?
That's perfect. That's exactly where I wanted you to be too. That's excellent. So the focus, as you can see, is on increasing the capacity in the general education environment so that whenever possible, it's an environment that's responsive to the varied needs of the learners within that classroom. So the little graphic there shows you some of the overarching categories of support within the district. I'm gonna let you take a look at those, and I'm going to turn this over to Allison so that she can explain that a little further.
Thanks, Angela. So and Pam, you can actually scroll down a little further on this page for for us. So as Angela mentioned, we spent some time streamlining our district curriculum accommodation plan so that it would be more user-friendly for teachers and also for parents. When we think about a district accommodation plan, it's essentially a list of resources that are available to help students access the curriculum, as Angela said, and also so that we have special education, we have students with disabilities who qualify for special education in Section 504. But that's not the only opportunity that students have to get support. So we have a lot of resources for students along a continuum. And to just give you a sense of the areas that are the types of resources that are available through the plan, we have our tiered support services, so our response to intervention, which may be classroom-wide or small group in the class, out of the classroom, based on student needs and based on the assessment information that we collect on students and where they are and where there might be gaps or needs. We also have a flexible curriculum in general education that is responsive to student needs and can be adapted for students. We offer multiple instructional support strategies based on student needs, and often those flow through our teacher assistance team, which is a group that gets together regularly. Teachers can make referrals of students who might be struggling in a particular area, and teachers and counselors and the principal will get together to brainstorm strategies for supporting students. That's again called teacher assistance team, and they will implement accommodations and supports and collect data to see if that's successful or if they need to try other strategies to support students. We also have as part of this plan, time for staff collaboration, problem-solving, professional development on areas where that the staff need to learn more about in order to meet student needs. We use assessment data so we can track student progress and again identify areas of need. In particular, we use AmesWeb at the elementary school. We're going to be implementing iReady also, which is another assessment tool that can be used three times a year. We'll be implementing that in the fall at the elementary school, and we recently started to implement that at the middle school. So we could have more data on how students are performing in the curriculum. We also, as part of this plan, may make referrals to counseling within the school or access to behavior consultation, or we may work with families around outside referrals to counseling or community agencies or other supports. And lastly, an area that we address in this plan is just parent communication and sharing information with parents. And I will turn it back to Angela, who can speak to the last page of the plan, which has more details for anyone who is interested.
Yeah, so as you look at this last page of the plan, actually, I think it's the last two pages, you'll see the matrix that Allison and I worked on this year to really try to streamline this plan. On the left side, you will see the strategies that align with the regulations put forth by the law around having a district accommodation plan. And on the right side, you'll see a description of the district resources that are associated to the strategy that's on the left. So again, these are, you know, every single one of them is complex in most cases. So there, these are on the last two pages that you can reference, that teachers can reference, that administrators can reference as they are discussing the needs of students and how to meet them. What we removed from this plan was the long list of recommendations of individual strategies, and those would actually be used at the building level when they're talking about individual students. So those resources are available to teachers and administrators, but they're not really necessary in the articulated plan. So we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I was muted, sorry. Just for clarification, can you explain what some of those things that you took off would look like? The individual?
Yes, they were very specific. So they were very specific strategies that one might use in a classroom. Say, for example, if a student needed special seating in a classroom, or if you were going to use a graphic organizer to help a student organize their thoughts. So there were very specific strategies that would be used at the classroom level to help put in place some universal support to help the students learn.
Okay. And so teachers, but if a teacher was having difficulty with a student, they might have their teacher assistance team convene, and those would be discussed at a team meeting like that so that the teacher would be able to implement those kinds of things? Is that?
That's exactly right, Sarah. So we still have resources for teachers, ideas of strategies that they can implement in the classroom based on different challenges a student might present with. And but that has become more of a resource for the building and the teacher assistance team rather than having voluminous lists of possible accommodations on the district curriculum accommodation plan. So we still have the information, but it's it resides with the teams.
Okay. Does anybody else?
More specific to the student being discussed.
Do committee members have questions for Angela and Allison about the district accommodation plan?
I have one and a quick, and then also just a little request that might not be for, might be for just general school committee type stuff on it. So my question for my question is, the, those kinds of things that were removed. So what I guess what I'm hearing, I want to clarify, is that this is just a streamlining, not big changes to the actual plan itself. Okay. But just a streamlining and a condensing and making it clear.
Yes.
Some of those things.
Was to make it more user-friendly so that it's easier to look and find the information you're seeking.
Sure.
Regarding this plan.
Okay, so some of those things that were condensed or taken out as individual strategies and things like that, are those things that might fall in the last couple categories? Because that's just where I noticed there, it just seemed kind of like a gap in my thinking because those are things that I would see more visibly as a parent of kids. The after-school options such as homework assistance and peer coaching. It just says teacher extra help, extracurricular activities in sports, or the strategies for the community agencies and volunteers. Those are it's, it just doesn't seem as robust as I might expect in those categories, but maybe I'm not realizing that that information is elsewhere.
It's also somewhat building-based. So for example, the high school has National Honor Society tutoring. And the middle school has a homework club. So it also, there's also, this is district-wide, what we have in common that we're doing, but there also are additional supports at the building level that may vary based on grade level. Okay. The National Honor Society being an example. We just have that at the high school, and they have tutoring.
So then I guess my request would be, and this might be for Pam, and you can tell me how feasible this is or isn't, but kind of like when we're looking, and I know there's nothing for us to vote on here, and I'm grateful for the chance to look at this and talk about it with you guys. But when we're looking in for, in future at something that is just a change in information, it would be helpful if we had the old one as well accessible, and it may very well be that it is accessible somewhere, but since we have a packet sent out to us for review, it would be a big help because that's what I didn't realize as I was reviewing this. And so that would be something I'd be interested in moving forward. Pam?
In the why on, why, why present it to you if you don't vote on it was to be informational and educational for the committee because this is a resource that we're required to have. And I just wanted everyone to be familiar with it, have access to it, and know that it lives on the curriculum and tech site as a resource for parents as well. So in case you ever got questions, and I think it's also just a nice overview of what's available in the district for supports for kids. But yeah, point taken, Teresa.
Great. Thanks a lot. Just, just to piggyback off of Teresa's question, and because we still have, you know, almost 40 members of the public on the call. If if parents are looking at this and wondering about some of these supports that maybe they weren't familiar with before this presentation, who can they contact to learn more about these?
Their building principal.
That's what I would say, too. I think that it's always best to, you know, start there with the building principal and let the building principal talk about the processes that are in place at the school.
I was surprised you didn't say classroom teacher.
That's true.
So well, that's a good idea as well.
Really good point.
Specifically mentions the principal, though, as overseeing the plan. So the class, you could ask the teacher as well, and they'll be aware of some of this, too.
Well, thank you both for presenting. Wait, why is it the, it's the, why isn't it just the DAP? I'm so confused about that.
Curriculum.
District. District curriculum accommodation plan.
Curriculum. Oh, I missed. Okay, sorry. It's late for me, and we have so much to talk about.
I know.
Got it.
Thank you for giving us the time. You guys have a very big agenda tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for sharing. All right. Have a good night.
You too.
All right. School choice options.
Hi. It's not time of year. Um, did I not, oh, give me one second. I did not bring up the school choice options. This one should be quick. So we, and for those who may be new or not remembering, because it's been, our our calendar has been a little off for the past few years. We post for school choice applications in December. The application period is December through March. It closed on March 4th. And then after March 4th, we go through and identify where we may have available seats, and that's the communication that I sent to you. And then make a decision at the school committee level whether or not we are going to continue with school choice for this year. So I don't know if you can see my screen. I'm trying to, attempting to share. Can you see my charts?
Right now I can just see the agenda.
There we go. So to recap, we received 116 applications for K-12 slots. The chart, which is, I can tell, small for you to see, is just a distribution of where we received applications. You'll see transition years are pretty popular. K is a very popular year one because some people are in a private pre-K, K environment and make the transition at grade one.
You know, Pam, just a really quick, this is a great time to remind everybody that you can make the images on your screen bigger by zooming in on them through this website.
And this is really just informational. Again, we we have six, nine, K and one are very big pool years for for applications. So we have 116 applications, plenty in the grade levels, I would say that we should target if we are to go forward with school choice, and we're gonna talk about that in a second. Again, looking at the pool, they tend to be from surrounding towns. Beverly, Gloucester, Rockport, some as far as Danvers, Ipswich. But we tend to be in the, we tend to pull applicants from the general commuting area. We also look to see if there are any siblings applying for choice seats. For those of you who have done this before, you may remember that siblings have dibs, so to speak. So if we have siblings who are applying to grade levels at which we determine we have space, they have first right to those seats because they already have a family member attending school in the district. So we do have some siblings that could gain placements this year. And that's always a positive when we can have when we can have students join their siblings here. So that's the short of who we have applying into what grade levels. And now let me bring up my chart on where I think we could place the kids. This is giving me a little trouble tonight. If you remember some of our enrollment discussions, we have some our enrollment this year at the middle school is under benchmark. So that is the area I would be targeting if we chose to go forward. I am really sorry. I'm having a little trouble with this. I'm gonna try this in a whole different way.
Pam, can I ask a question while you, while you pull that up?
Yep, you can.
Just because I'm new to this conversation. Once a student is choiced into the district, are we obligated then to keep them through graduation?
Once a student is in district, they're a member as if they were a resident.
Okay, thank you.
Can I do the same while you're pulling something up?
Sure can, because this document just doesn't want to come up right now. Please ask a question. And if not, I'm just gonna go with verbal. I know it all in my head. I was hoping to provide you with something to look at while I was talking. But my chart and points don't seem to want to make it to the screen. Go ahead, Teresa.
I was just asking about the siblings. So if we have siblings, do we prioritize them over target grades? Do we look to try to accommodate that, or do we only, is it, how does that work?
We, historically, I will go with the grade. If the grade has space and then there's a sibling, that sibling gets first right to the seat.
Got it.
We have not in the past opened up seats in grades we wouldn't typically deem accessible just to provide a sibling a seat.
Got it. Thank you.
There is my document. It really does exist, and I'm gonna try, yeah, one more time to make this work. For some reason.
And Pam, when, when students are choicing into elementary school, they're being, they're not choosing into a specific elementary school? Is that correct? They're being, they're choosing into the district and then they're placed according to space?
Yeah. And in a given year, what we've done is actually held those placements until um, the very end of summer in August, when placements are being made, just to make sure we have the longest lens possible on where um, new resident enrollment might land. I think that, that isn't going to be an issue for us this year based on the grade levels I would recommend targeting in our current enrollment. So the chart, I've been so desperately trying to get um, onto the screen. So this is just a look at um, our current enrollment at uh, grade six, eight and nine, which we'll discuss in a second. So you know, we have a hundred and sixteen applicants, plenty in all of the, the gray levels um, to, to fill a number of different scenarios. The committee has the option at this point to do a couple of different things. You could choose to discontinue school choice. That legitimate question is, you know, what's the cost benefit overall on school choice? Um, we, it's truly a lottery. It's not an application process as you would to a private school where we are evaluating students um, for fit, or whether or not we have the resources to accommodate needs. We're basically opening up a lottery and um, choosing students at random to join us. And then as Kate said, once they asked, once they're part of the district, they are our students as if they were residents here. So one option for discussion is we could discontinue school choice. I think there's a financial price tag for long-term continuation. We do rely on approximately three hundred um, to three hundred fifty thousand dollars a year in revenue from school choice. And if we phase that out completely over time, that revenue uh, would need to be replaced by either tax dollars or budget um, reductions or changes of some order. Um, our current practice for the past few years, particularly when our enroll, resident enrollment was uh, growing at a rapid rate, we took the approach of just replacing students as they graduated. So this year we have three students, uh, three school choice students graduating. So our past practice would be to simply add three new school choice students to our current enrollment. I would suggest that this year, because of our declining enrollment and because we did taper off school choice for many years, at one point we had seventy-five to eighty-five students and we're closer to the five hundred thousand dollar mark for revenue. We could look to add up to an additional seventeen students to in, increase um, our school choice intake for next year. If we discontinue school choice, we would lose fifteen thousand dollars. If we went with the three student scenario, we would gain fifteen thousand dollars. If twenty seems to be too much, twenty would get you a hundred thousand dollars. Um, fifteen students would put us at seventy-five. So I think the discussion for school committee is um, you know, how are you feeling in general about school choice as an asset to the district? Um, in terms of bringing in students from different communities as well as revenue? And um, if you want to continue, then kind of what is the just right uh, formula for this year? So why am I suggesting uh, middle school? I'm suggesting middle school because the question that typically gets asked, and I think Matt asked me, the proposition on school choice is we sell seats, sounds like a, it's a horrible phrase, but essentially we offer school choice seats when we have available capacity for which we're already carrying um, the full cost of running a classroom. So what we look to do is identify classes where class size is uh, below the benchmark comfortably. And then we can add students um, to seats that just aren't being used in time. And the trick is to try to add just the right amount of students. So you don't put yourself in jeopardy of having um, a resident spike push you into needing additional personnel. Um, so this chart just gives you a, a scenario with adding fifteen or twenty students and it shows you the impact to class size. Um, so what we know about grade six, seven and eight is their current enrollment is very low, particularly in the seventh grade. Um, we're designed for about a hundred and ten students and we're running um, you know, eighty to ninety-nine at the middle school. So that, that's an area where we could look um, to make some gains. As a point of comparison, you have your FY seventeen total um, total class enrollment in what the average class breakdown sizes. So for many years, they were running at twenty-five and twenty-six, and now they're down um, into the nineteen, sixteen and twenty range. Similarly, the ninth grade has some capacity. We also know that that's a, like, a kind of a, a year of flux where it, it's a year where some kids will opt to go to the tech, some kids will opt to go to private school. So the number we have today may not be the number we start the year with. So we can potentially um, bring in students there as well. And the way the high school schedule is designed, um, with the rotating drop in the six to seven courses, uh, it's not, it, it wouldn't be too difficult for them to absorb five additional students. So that would be if we are going to continue, my recommendation for where to put them, whether it's a three, fifteen, twenty, or some other number would be to target grade six through nine. Um, I don't think, given the, the budget cuts we've been discussing and the capacity at the elementary school, some of our post-COVID challenges, some of the cuts that are coming our way, I would not look to add to class size there at this point in time. Um, I think we're bumping up against benchmark. Um, and when we look at the com, composition of the classes, I, I, I think, I, I think we're in a position where the, another variable isn't necessary. I would, I would recommend targeting the middle school. So now it is for you to discuss and for me to answer questions that you might have.
It's so confusing to hear this after so many years of talking about the bubble of, at the middle school, and now we don't have a bubble at the middle school anymore.
No, but you can see it's flowing, it start, it's flowing through the high school. The high school numbers are not that different now than they were in FY seventeen.
So I think we've got so, like a newer board. So I think it's good to talk about the pros and cons of school choice. Like the one pro is obvious. We get a little extra money in the budget. This is great. And another pro, I think, is that it adds a little more uh, diversity from other towns, other kids coming into other towns, bringing other interests and um, other perspectives, which I think is good. Um, it's, my kids have certainly had a lot of uh, kids who were choiced in from other towns um, as their friends. So I think that's another pro. Um, I think the cons, um, especially, especially with older kids coming in, is that they're, sometimes they're leaving for a reason. And so, like, why did they want to leave? And we don't know that information. So is this, you know, is it going to be a student who needs a lot of extra care and attention? Um, and that's just something to think about. And I know Allison has brought that up at this meeting on other years when we've been talking about school choice. Um, so I'll just, I just throw that out there into the mix for conversation for people to think about as we have this discussion.
Just a couple of comments there, if I could.
Of course.
Um, we're not actually, and Pam, I don't think we're actually on a vote tonight, but this is a beginning of a discussion, if I, if I'm correct.
Um, if the committee's prepared to vote, I don't feel like we have the enrollment watch need that we've had in past years. So if we're ready tonight, it would be helpful to have this um, executed prior to April break. I think one of the criticisms we've had in the past, I've had of myself, is that or of our processes, that we have, we continue to wait late. And then some of the students that we were counting on to come are no longer available because they've made other decisions in the process. Um, but we've had to do that in the past because we've been watching enrollment so tightly. So hopefully tonight, if we can, if not by April 1st, would be helpful.
No, thank you on that clarification. And I guess I, I just had two quick things to offer. Um, number one was, again, like Sarah, I've been doing this for a while, heard some of the pros and cons. So I really encourage the newer members to ask questions and poke there. But I'm realizing that school choice, as school choice participants roll out, they don't affect the balance of the um, apportionment between Essex and Manchester, I don't think. So that's a minor little benefit. Um, the other is, is that I think it's worth, when you mentioned coming in at middle school, one thing I don't think it came up in school committee, but it was, there was a discussion that had gone on about private school enrollment and that we always typically do at ninth grade level, see a fair amount of people coming in and people leaving. So um, just that that private school flow in and flow out is fairly typical as well. And the implication, I, I'm less concerned about adding at the middle school just knowing that, you know, the middle school, from the middle school on there for this for six, possibly seven years at the elementary school, any additions we make our first twelve years. So it somewhat limits our flexibility. So I, I guess I just appreciate, I want to point out that strategic thing I think you do, Pam, of looking at middle, and especially this shows that we are middle school enrollment is dropping, but we're going to be carrying the class size and the teaching structure to handle um, the right-hand column. So I'll, I'll leave my comments at that.
And that's the tough spot with middle school, particularly if we get questions around the budget. The middle school is the most fixed staffing because of the team structure. So right now it's enjoying um, the nineties, the, the distribution of the ninety-six students among a, the team of five. But it, it's painful when the classes creep up to one thirty-one because there's just, there's no physical space to add a team. And to add a team means to add two to four people um, at one time to create a secondary team at grade level. So we have been kind of boxed in there.
Ken and I are bubble class parents, so we can tell you all about it.
Well, and one last item, it doesn't appear there's any hope. I, I think the five thousand dollar tuition payment from the sending district has remained constant for at least a decade. And there probably is no change in what that, in that or no indication that'll ever increase anytime soon.
I think maybe two decades.
Okay.
A long time.
And just, just a quick question on the chart. And I don't think it's, it just, for tenth grade, it goes from one thirteen for the projected down to one oh four with school choice. Is that? Is that a typo?
It's probably a typo.
Okay. I don't think it affects this conversation. I just looked at the.
Probably a formula error.
Okay.
Um, let me uh, pull, I will pull up my spreadsheet on the side and see if I can get a resolution to that.
I do notice that it's one oh four in the FY twenty-three column and also in the FY seventeen column. So maybe that was.
Yes. I should never be left to spreadsheets on my own.
So Pam.
Can I have a question?
Are you raising your hand? Yeah, go ahead.
All right, this might, I, I'll just open this can of worms. We heard how many people speak earlier. Is this, this money that we're uh, potentially voting on uh, as revenue, is that already factored into our budget? And if not, is this something that could help us with the uh, the language program?
Not factored into the budget, potentially, but I think we want to put a pin in that discussion until we get to the budget update.
Okay. Then can we put a pin in voting until after that? And it, it'll inform?
Yeah, we, we sure can. We can just use this as informational. I can, I mean, we are at eight thirty. I can go to the spreadsheet. Yeah, my spreadsheet looks very different than that form. So let me figure out what my errors are. And um, we can take this up again on the first. I guess maybe if tonight, so we're not even sure. Are you thinking we're going to completely discontinue? Is that a potential? No. So it's.
But do you want to do a little straw poll?
Honestly, I, I wouldn't even be able to form an opinion. It's, it's strictly about how does this impact the, the things that we have coming for budget right now?
Yeah.
It, for me.
All right. So why don't we table this for a second and we can talk a little bit about where we are at the budget. And if you want to revisit it before we close out tonight, we can.
Okay.
My guess is once we go through where we are with the budget, you're probably gonna want to wait until April 1st.
We keep saying April 1st. April 1st is my birthday. It's Friday. So I know we're not meeting that day, right?
How about, I'll, I'll switch to the first Tuesday in April. I think it's the fifth now.
Okay, got it.
That was, that was Pam's attempt at April Fool's joke, so.
Uh, it was very funny.
Did you just say your birthday's on April Fool's Day?
It is.
Okay, that's good to know.
Oh, you're lying about that. We, we'll never know.
You'll never know.
You want to do the budget update right now and then we'll end with facilities?
Sure. Well, I think there are a lot of, a, a couple of people on the call who really want to hear the field discussion. So I, I mean, I'm fine to do it either way.
Let's go with the fields discussion. We'll give Avi a chance to do some talking.
Okay.
All right. So we'll leave school choice open for the moment and try to just circle back with what our next steps will be before we end the conversation.
Sounds good.
Hi, everybody.
Facilities fun.
And um, actually, I'm gonna do even less talking, but I'll do just maybe a little quick intro because I think Jason Waldron has been holding on the line for us. Uh, I believe he's here.
Hey guys, yep.
Hi, Jason.
Hi.
For the agenda items, I'll just read you off the four items that we're gonna talk about tonight. One is the facilities condition index, two is the fields, three is Essex Boiler and four is the Essex Playground. Maybe we should start with the field first, if there are a bunch of people who are here for that. And I guess what I, the first thing I just want to say before I hand it over to Jason is that uh, I know there've been a lot of questions and we've had conversations about uh, delays in replacing the field. Either way, in any scenario, knowing that we put out a bid for a architect, sorry, a design firm uh, that we did a, a, award to come on to do that work for us. No matter what, that wasn't going to happen until the summer. So what, part of what you're gonna hear from Jason is about what's going on, including right now. And so um, we've always had in our plans to have part of our routine uh, maintenance as well as uh, added maintenance for this spring, so we can open this field safely. I know there are a lot of concerns and, you know, as I've mentioned before, our goal is to make sure that we wouldn't open the field without uh, clearance to play safely. So that's really what I wanted to start with. I'm, I'm gonna let Jason go into the details.
Yeah, hi, everyone. Um, so kind of just, you know, being, you know, brief is, you know, we know that the status of the fields, you know, we know that you know, the conditions, we know the age, um, you know, we're doing everything we can to, to maintain the fields, to keep them safe, to keep them playable for, for our student athletes. Um, in recent years, we've updated or upgraded our maintenance program to, to twice a year. Um, we've done numerous seam repairs, as you guys have heard. On Brook Street, we've added infill to a lot of the areas, the high-traffic areas. Um, we've done numerous G-MAX tests. So we've continued and upgraded our maintenance program to um, our fields. Um, and this year, uh, we've actually done um, a little more. Um, FieldTurf, um, as you guys have heard, um, started on the fields today. Um, they started Highland Field. Um, they're a well-represented, well-respected company. Um, installed numerous, numerous fields throughout New England. Um, we have a great tech, um, that, that, that knows the field very, very well. Um, spent a lot of time working with him over the last few years. Um, I spend most of the day with him today. Um, we, we looked at the field, we analyzed the field, um, we identified some of the, some of the major areas that are a bit of concern to us. Um, and those areas are being addressed. Usually they're on the field for about a day. Um, and that includes bringing out machines, bringing out equipment, deep tining the fields, which basically kind of takes the sand and the rubber and kind of, which is decompacted over the years and brings them up. They also take, it's almost like a drag mount and redisperses the infill because, you know, it, it winds up on the sidelines, it winds up in cleats, and it, it really is obviously intended to be kind of equally dispersed throughout the field. And again, that takes about a day's work. Um, however, we're doing um, extra work this year and we're doing about two days of work on the field. So tomorrow is gonna be really spent on, on repairs to Highland, on seam repairs. Um, again, identifying the, the, kind of the worst-case scenarios, kind of the, the main issues that we feel are needed to, to be replaced. Um, is it a full seam replacement? No. Um, but again, it's really addressing a lot of the safety um, concerns um, that, that we identified in our walkthrough today. Um, on top of that, um, I ordered um, you know, extra infill and what we're gonna do um, as a maintenance staff is really kind of just, just walk the fields on a regular basis, daily, um, and really kind of, you know, as you see on a golf course, kind of repairing your divot, is this kind of going around with the infill, infill, noticing any depressions, noticing any wear spots. We're gonna be better this spring about really kind of getting in there and adding infill, making sure that the fields are, 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 are safe to play on. Um, over at Brook Street, um, that work's gonna probably start probably um, Thursday, Thursday, Friday. Um, a lot of that will be kind of a similar process, decompacting the fields, making sure they're safe. Um, compaction is one of the, the big issues, if not the biggest issue over at Brook Street. So we'll probably. So we'll probably be adding a lot of infill to that, making sure that those G max levels are acceptable and playable. So again, that's kind of the work that we're doing this week. And again, making sure that the fields are safe for Monday, which which opens up the spring season. You know, as you know, we we have Gale Associates coming in not only to design the the two turf fields, but they'll be in next week to do kind of an assessment and current conditions of this field. I'm sorry, of of both fields. We just felt that that was important because to get a real good sense on what we need to do to not only main the fields for this spring, this summer, but if this project does, you know, get delayed, what do we need to do? Is it more seam repairs? Again, what do we need to do? What is their kind of their expertise opinion on on items we the items we need to do to to keep those those fields safe and playable for us student athletes? So again, we're we're doing a lot. Again, it's it's not a field replacement, but but we we put a lot of time, a lot of effort into making sure that these fields are safe. And again, we will continue to do so until those fields get replaced.
Jason, one of the things that you and I talked about, which I just want to mention as well is that with sports season opening, starting next week, based on the work that's going to be done, we feel that we're going to be ready to go. We would not open the field if that was not the case, knowing technicians pretty well. It does seem that the repairs that we can do and that we were planning to do all along, knowing that the replacement wasn't going to happen until the summer would certainly allow us to open the field this summer. But I just want to know, based on your your first day of work with them since we last connected, is there anything that leads you to believe that there could be a delay to the opening of the field?
No, I mean, and again, that was kind of our part of our main walkthrough and the work that they're going to do tomorrow is, you know, if Gale comes in next week, what are they going to look for? Again, Field Turf is is worked with Gale numerous, numerous occasions. They've worked with other engineer firms on many occasions. You know, they're they've been in business for many, many years. So they know really what to look for. Really the top safety issues, and we're addressing those in the work that's being done tomorrow.
Thanks. And then the only other thing, just for those who are listening who may not have heard from prior meetings, part of having Gale Associates onsite now, in addition to the interim plan, is to begin work on the design specifications of the field. As we've mentioned, there may be some issues around timing that are not about to be the final timeline is not yet known to us about when we will be able to put the bid out. Is it, you know, we know it's not going to be this summer based on what we've heard from Gale, just because of supply chain issues. Is it going to be next summer? Is it going to be the summer after? Either way, Gale is getting its work done on the design specification so that their part of the work is ready to go, which will involve not just design specifications, but permitting as well. So that at least that portion is not starting from zero. Once we get our long term funding issue resolved, which we're hoping can be resolved within a year, maybe two. So that's the turf field update. And I'm wondering if it makes sense, Pam, would you prefer that we give the updates on the other facility items on the agenda before we go into questions? Or would you like questions, man? Or school committee?
Does school committee have an opinion? You guys want to do questions on each item as it goes through?
I would at least on this because this is such a big thing that, you know, maybe the rest of them, we might be able to condense into one. It's just a.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's a good thought. Let's have fields, field questions. Let's field questions on the field. Who would like to start?
Ask the basic one around safety, I guess. Avi and Jason, over the course of the year, what's the mechanism? I guess I'm less worried about people being embarrassed by the field being patched as I am around that it's unsafe, there's catch points and the rest of that that I've heard. What's the mechanism throughout the course of the year just to maintain and monitor that, even though if we we would be continuing with repaired fields?
So again, we're we're making repairs to the field you know, this week for the spring season. After Gale's assessment, they'll make recommendations for the summer and we'll we'll put those into place for for the summer season to get ready in into the fall. Part of their assessment will be, again, not just, you know, needed repairs for the summer, but here's what you're going to need on on a on a kind of a regular basis. So we're going to kind of follow those steps. More than likely, some of their recommendations will have to go out to bid to to, you know, qualified vendors. So we'll we'll take the appropriate steps for that. But but again, for the spring season, you know, not only are we doing the repairs this week, you know, as I kind of mentioned, we're going to make sure as a maintenance staff, our in-house staff, that we're paying closer attention you know, to the field on a regular basis and making, you know, any repairs that that needs to be done.
Okay, thanks, Jason. I guess it's just, it's spring, it's pothole season. I know you guys even, I I appreciate the gap fillers over the bridge between the Memorial School. I know your crew is on there, but I just want to make make sure there is a closed loop that if somebody says, hey, there's a big hole there. It isn't like the pothole down the road for me that's on a private road that continues to grow bigger each day.
No.
Gets addressed quickly.
Nope, exactly. We're we're going to be ahead of it. Yep, for sure.
Understood. Thank you.
Getting two vendors involved. The only thing, sorry, Sarah, I was just gonna say getting two different vendors involved allows us to get the what we can for a clean bill of health, so we can open the season in good conscience. Like we said, we would not, if we had any indication from either vendor that it was not safe to do so, we would not.
Teresa.
So this is really dumbing it down. This is taking Ken's question and bringing it down to to my level. So just to clarify, the the determination of safety, that's an internal decision. Is there does M I A A or does anyone come and check this specifically? Or is that an internal decision? That's my first question.
What do you mean by internal? So we're again, we're bringing.
Within the district, I'm sorry, like like determining that it's safe to go ahead. So some of the public comment we've heard over, you know, recent meetings has been about concerns about maybe other teams refusing to play here or that sort of thing. So I'm just wondering who makes the final determination on what safe is?
Yeah. So again, I think another reason Gale is coming in is to determine yes, the field is safe and here's how we we keep it safe. And again, we'll we'll have that report. You know, again, we can't control what the visiting team does or says, but yeah, what what are our plans to kind of have that professional report kind of in hand and follow that to a T to to ensure the safety of the fields?
Okay, so it's it is. It's a district decision, but we use professionals to get to make that informed.
Right, exactly. Right.
I I suspect officials can also, I'm not familiar with how the athletes go on. Officials at any point in time could say we're not playing because of whatever conditions, they can make the call as well.
Yeah, I I've seen that. I've seen that a lot with weather, certainly, you know, if if a field is, you know, too wet, you know, for whatnot. So I think they can make that call. Correct. I don't want to be a hundred percent sure on that, but I I've seen that happen on a field. Sure.
And then my other question, and you know, Pam, Avi, you, Jason, you guys can defer this to another time if you need to, but I know that there are so many people who are passionate about this. You know, we've heard from a lot of them, you know, in public comment and also in emails. And I know you guys have had meetings and conversations with those passionate groups of people, maybe to bring us newer committee members up to speed on the idea of sponsorship and that sort of thing. Can someone just sort of give us the the explain it like I'm five where we're at with that kind of thing?
I don't know how simple the explanation is. So I would have to go back and dust off the sponsor. There's going to be two policies, sponsorship and donations, I think, that would come into play. And I'm very rusty on sponsorship because we've never really had it. If it went through a donations process, I think the school committee is going to have to sanction the fundraising. And then the donation of the monies to the school for a specific purpose, kind of a much larger version of what we went through with the elementary, with the Essex Elementary Playground. And that you would have to give the parameters by which you would accept funds for a specific purpose.
Okay.
But we can dust those policies off and take a look if you want to pursue that.
I love that I'm raising my hand as if I'm going to call on myself.
Well, I would love it if we could dust off the sponsorship policy because this is a conversation that keeps coming my way. And so.
Yeah, can we just fundraise for it? Is that the?
No, I'm saying sponsorship in particular, like as in, and I don't know if it's exact, but Gloucester has the what the New Balance Gloucester High School, you know, New Balance Dual Stadium, that kind of thing. Budget stinks. I mean.
Yeah, no, it's no, I'm not. It's not. Yes, I I'm just thinking through. I think we need to spend a little time on what that process would look like and engage the community in which the advertisement might be present.
Yeah.
I think we have a neighborhood school versus a well, I guess it's in a neighborhood. It's just a larger footprint. But yeah. I think it's worth pursuing.
Yeah, I love all these creative ideas. Just I just want to be clear because it took me a while to process this that we're not doing the field this summer because of supply chain issues. So we couldn't be doing the field no matter what this summer. But I I like the idea of either fundraising or sponsorship for the field. But I think also we have set aside money for the field. And I'm wondering, and I just this, I'm just throwing this out there so that as we continue to think about it, if we were going to say, do some fundraising and sponsorship and be able to do the field as soon as the supplies were able to get off the boat and onto a truck and over to Manchester. I think we should set still set aside that other money for fields because we have a lot of fields. I mean, we have we have Highland Field, we have Brook Street Field, and I think we have potential to have great fields in Essex, near Essex Elementary. And to have that money still set aside for fields, even if it's not this field might be a smart idea. And we don't have to talk about that right now. I just wanted just stick, throw that out and see if it sticks to the wall.
Agreed.
Other questions about the field? All right. So it seems like we have a plan. Yeah.
Can I ask a point of clarification? So are you advocating for when at the soonest date we can get the Highland Field replaced, we should move forward with at least fifty percent of the field replacement?
Am I advocate? Yeah, I mean, it seems like this field really needs to be replaced and that we might be throwing good money after bad. So I think I am advocating for replacing the field, but but I not at the expense of our educational program or getting into all of our reserves that we need in case an override vote doesn't pass. So.
Is Pam frozen? Oh.
No, I'm.
She's pensive.
I think the real big, the big picture question is, and I'm trying to put myself in a lot of different sets of shoes is the comment that's resonating with me, and I think it was Abby. We have long term set aside this money. Airmark this money for this express purpose. If we want to go sponsorship and in in fundraising, that's that's a legitimate direction to go. And I don't want us to lose the real problem we're trying to solve, which is our operational budget isn't appropriately funded and we're you trying to use resources dedicated for other purposes and collectively agreed upon to dedicate for other purposes to backstop not having enough revenue to support our basic operations. And I don't want, well, I would support, well, I will always support getting as much as we can for the kids in the moment. I don't want us to go down the road of sponsorship and forget the real problem that that we're dealing with here.
I don't think we could. I I mean, just the, I mean, look at the reserve situation as it is even, I mean, that's I don't know that we could forget that, but I I appreciate that viewpoint.
I think I think the override is kind of the elephant in the room relative to the field. I mean, we keep using reserves every year for the budget.
And I think there's a legitimate debate to be had, and I think there's real respectful difference of opinion over what is the purpose of reserves and one time funds. And I and I think I probably subscribe to you. You do what you have to. There's the pragmatic component of me, but the one time funds should not be used underwrite the budget. It should be a no brainer that we put them away for an express plan purpose.
Particularly if we made that commitment years in advance. Yeah.
Well, and I think it's a frustration too, knowing how hard Avi's worked over the years. And we've worked it as a collective team of the school committee in the collaboration to be mindful and thoughtful and have a multi year lens on how we're doing business. If we don't reconcile the purpose of reserves and how to use them in the future, I think we're just going to keep getting stuck here. And I don't know that all parties agree that we're doing the right thing.
So can I ask a question on that? So because I I think you're right, and that's the same conversation we've had to have the, you know, past few months and trying to figure that out. So I mean, what do we do then? Do we? Because part, I mean, I know that tonight we're saying, you know, the supply chain is a factor here and that that was always going to be a factor. But also there is the factor of, I mean, we have been talking about for the last couple of months, needing to be careful in case.
Yes.
Next year. I mean, that's that's a real thing. So would you suggest that we table that until we find out if if our two member towns are going to be able to come to consensus and understanding, you know, in a long term vision about how reserves are used or so I guess that's my question about like the sponsorship and things. Can we, can we have something to help us in the meantime while we're resolving that? Or do you think it's better for the district as a whole to wait and deal with it on its own?
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm just being, I'm being honest. I think it's like all tied up in a knot right now.
Yeah.
How soon could we even look at, like, if money wasn't an object, what is the timeline on potential replacement of the field?
Next, uh, twenty three. Summer twenty twenty three.
We have real time to try to untie the knot.
Yeah. We can start working, as Avi mentioned, start working on on the on the design. That's going to, that, you know, that's going to take some time, especially if we're kind of including Brook Street, you know, with with permitting and whatnot, that that'll take some time. But that should be complete and, you know, potentially right out, ready to go out to bid in the, you know, late fall, November timeframe, which should give us plenty of time to lock down a contractor, lock down pricing, lock down any, any, you know, supplies and whatnot. So.
Well, that's helpful. Thank you.
Bart, what do you think is the cost of design though?
Excuse me?
Do you know the cost of design? You do that in house?
No.
We had a proposal that week. All right, Jason.
No, exactly. You know, and Avi was just going to say, we we went out to to bid for a design service a couple of months ago and Gale won that that bid.
That's right, you're missing it. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Sixty thousand dollars.
I was just going to say sixty thousand dollars was was there.
There's two options in there depending on exactly how the timeline works and whether there's any splitting of timeline between the two fields, even if it's short. So it's it's in, I believe, the high fifties to sixty five thousand dollars, just looking at it right here.
And again, if we even designed both projects, that would help us save. You know, that doesn't mean we have to construct both fields, but to get at least get them designed at once would 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 save us some money. Obviously, it's less mobilization. They're there on site and whatnot. So.
I'm thinking about it. It feels like the heavy lift for the and I'm thinking about the students and the people and program cuts and everything that we're wrestling with. It's how do we communicate what we hear from constituents at our meetings to the broader groups who who aren't dialed in to the the pressures and it's not even the pressures, the expectations people have for what we deliver for services.
I I think part of that is healing our collaboration process. We've we've had a really difficult two budget seasons and part of that healing has to take place because that's where this discussion should take place and those understandings.
Agreed. Do we want to go through the other few items and then land on the budget?
Yeah.
Thanks for the field info.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Yeah.
Big takeaway is we're a little, we cannot accomplish anything before summer of twenty three other than to invest in making it as safe as possible for the kids in the fall.
Getting the design specifications rolling, which is happening no matter what. So that's going. So Jason, do you want to touch?
Forward with repairs and design. And we'll figure it out.
Yep. We want to hit that facilities condition index topic.
Yep, yep. I mean, I can go through them all. Sure. So. So, um, few months ago, we, we went out to bid similar to kind of the turf to design, a, a, a design kind of for facilities assessment. We did this before my time in 2013 that focused on the more old Memorial School as well as the Essex Elementary School. Um, that kind of report that was generated to us, you know, helped really, you know, get going the new Memorial School. So, um, you know, that was nine years ago. So, um, you know, recently we, we went out to, to, to accomplish another facility assessment. Um, bids were due last Wednesday. Um, we received three bids back from qualified vendors, Colliers Associates, Habib and Associates, who did the previous study back in 2013, as well as J C J, who many of you guys are familiar with because they were the architect for the Memorial Building. Uh, the difference in this is obviously we're going to put a focus on Essex once again to determine, um, you know, what is needed from that building, how long we can we get out of that building. We're also going to look at the high school as well. Primarily the reason for looking at the high school is just to kind of help us with our capital budget um, for that, for, for, for that school, help us kind of do a life expectancy on items such as the roof, the boilers, um, air handle units, look at programming, kind of see what we need from this building going forward. Um, so next steps with that is we're going to meet as a subcommittee hopefully next, end of next week and, um, you know, look through the proposals and hopefully have a recommendation to the school committee, um, you know, maybe even by the next time you guys meet. So, um, so that should be a fun process. The process itself takes about four months, um, will take. So, you know, they go through not only just the facilities, but they interview staff, they look at this, um, space, what's needed for space, what's needed for programming, looking at trends and whatnot. So again, hopefully that work can, can kind of take place late spring into the summer and we'll have a, a report generated by, you know, hopefully sometime in, in early fall. Do you want me to keep going, Avi? Who's that?
Let's see the boiler next.
All right.
Essex Elementary Boiler.
All right, so we, we talked about the potential need for a new building in Essex. Before that, we're, we're gonna, as, as, as you guys may have known, we're, we're gonna need a new boiler. So we've kind of started that process. We've, we've talked to a few designers, a few, um, a few engineers. You know, we got a couple of proposals from an engineer that we've used in the past that we use for Memorial. Their pricing and their scope of work was, 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 was pretty high in my opinion. Um, I, I think if we were looking at, traditionally you have, you have, you, you put in two new boilers that are gonna last you 30 to 40 years. Um, right now, we're looking for one boiler that could last us 10 years. You know, we know we need a boiler, but you know, hopefully it's not gonna last us 30 years. We're gonna hopefully look at 10. So we're looking at, at kind of other options just to determine kind of what's the best fit for us. You know, certainly we want to be, you know, financially, um, you know, responsible. So we, we really don't need something really kind of overdesigned. We need something that's, that's certainly gonna last and work for us for about 10 years. So, so we've reached out to a couple of other design firms, a couple of other contractors. Um, and hopefully we, we get this going in the relatively near future. And by next heating season, you know, October, November, we'll, we'll have two good working boilers at Essex and I can sleep better at night. So that would be, that would be nice.
And let me just very quickly add, so we have a functioning boiler, it's from 2008. The backup boiler is the one that does not really work. And, um, and generally it's best practice to have two. A, because cycling boilers on and off extend the life of both rather than overtaxing one. And two, because you don't want to have a situation where one boiler goes down in the middle of heating season. And we are currently exposed, we have had a situation at the Old Memorial School where we did have such an emergency. We did get a weekend roll-up boiler that was, you know, brought in. So you can do something when that happens, we're definitely trying to avoid that. So this would become the new, a new boiler and the 2008 boiler could become the backup that they would cycle. And, you know, just to give you a quick sense of price points, you know, this could, um, we're assuming this could be something that is over a hundred thousand dollars for the boiler. We don't really have firm pricing yet, we won't have that till we go out to bid. The first step is to get design services taken care of. Um, so, and those will cost money too. And to give you a general sense, sometimes 10% of construction cost is a reasonable estimate for design services. It could be a little bit more than that, that's what Jason is working on right now. So, um, that's that item. And then I guess the last one is the playground update?
Yeah, sure. Um, so, um, as, as everyone knows, playground was installed, you know, last year, um, kind of the phase two of the, of, of the project. You know, labor was, was, was tough getting kind of a crew out there. Uh, we worked with Jeffries Creek, you know, obviously they're a local, you know, company, they gave us a really kind of a, a, a good price. And they've been kind of working on, like I said, kind of that phase two, which includes multiple pathways into the playground, um, removing the concrete, the current concrete pathway that, that is there now. Again, adding a stone dust pathway as well as another one kind of to the left of the playground. Um, on top of that, they'll be doing a lot of grading work that will help the drainage as well as adding a, a perimeter trail. So, um, you know, that work has started, it's kind of been kind of here and there. Winter was obviously tough and there was a couple of days they got out there, they did a lot of the grading, they added a drainage system which will help. Um, we, they added some back stairs, um, to, like, to get into the back of the playground. Um, actually met with them the other day. Our plan is to have that phase two, as I call it, completed by April vacation. Um, so again, if there's a day or two that's nice weather that, that is, is dry, they're gonna get out there. Um, I don't really want to just leave it for April vacation because if we get three or four days of rain, they, they can't do any work. But again, the goal is to have that phase completed um, by the end of April vacation. From there, I know a lot of the volunteers, um, are going to be working on getting some shrubs, plantings, um, a, as well as some, some seeding for that area. So again, it's, it's coming together. Um, I'm, I'm looking forward for it to coming together. And obviously we've talked about this playground for, for few years now and, you know, hopefully in the next, uh, you know, few months, it kind of comes all together. Because it's really gonna be great once it does.
Thanks, Jason. And then the only thing I just want to clarify from a financial standpoint, when Jason talks about phase two. Phase one was the school district funded portion through stabilization reserve funds that we had earmarked for capital improvements, which is complete and has been for some time. Phase two is the community funded portion that we had brought to school committee where through some community fundraising, there has been the ability to, to fund some of these new items uh, that Jason's talked about, we had showed at design. So we're completely closed on the district funded portion and have been, uh, since, uh, the start of the school year.
Awesome.
As for facilities update, I have to say, it's awesome to have somebody like Jason who just is so on top of so many things. So thank you, Jason, for being here and staying on the call for so, uh, long while we're doing other things and
No problem.
Be thankful to have a person who helps us as we are going through a lot of complicated long-term planning issues and short-term issues. He has really, really upped our game. And it just brings me back, I will say very briefly, to when we had the district improvement plan. And one of the things that we had on there was wanting to have the condition of our field facilities matching the quality of our educational experience. And that didn't happen overnight, but there's no doubt that, uh, since Jason has been here, we have really, really upped our game. So I'm extremely thankful.
Thank you so much, Jason.
Thank you, Avi. I pass it to my staff as well, as you guys know, as I always do. We have a great, great staff, so I just want to make sure that they get recognized as well, so.
We do have a dream team working with Jason.
We do.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Jason. All right, we're gonna try to make this as quick as possible because I know we're getting into hour three and we've lost quite a few people from the outset of the meeting. Um, when last we left, we had, we had come up with a budget, uh, adoption that landed us with a 2.89% assessment, uh, required us to balance reserves and cuts. But we did land the plane last meeting. So this is just a snapshot of where we are and what our working um, plan is going forward unless and until we make any changes to the reductions or use of reserves, uh, that we determined at budget adoption. I know it felt a little open-ended, um, at the end of last meeting as to whether or not we wanted to continue considering the increased use of reserves. We started getting into scenarios of how we could do that and the mechanics of it. And we kind of spun out on that a little bit, but I think that's it. The mechanics of it is different from the big picture question. So I know that's still rattling around in people's heads. I know there are programs on this list that, you know, in a perfect situation, we don't want to lose. Um, and we're kind of getting pushed into making, um, some decisions that aren't, you know, we're, we're having to make choices that we don't really want to have to make, but we're working from the discretionary inward to the core. And that's why some of the programs that are on the list are being discussed. So that being said, we have an adopted budget. Um, we're making preparations to execute on this because we do have to hit some end-of-the-year timelines we're planning. But what we're doing is we're also continuing to watch some of the assumptions that we had in the budget and some new, some new late in the year emerging expenditures for FY23. So we'll start with the good news. The good news is, if you recall, um, we were carrying a line at the bottom of the budget for earmarking School Choice Reserve for a potential increase in healthcare, that we were carrying a 10% assumption in the budget, but we were hearing a little bit from our partners at USI that our numbers were, weren't, weren't great this year and we may be looking at as high as a 15% increase. The good news is that, um, in a phone meeting on 3-7, our reps, um, said our target for renewal remains 10%. So we should be coming in, um, at the budgeted assumption number. So we should not need to use the estimated earmark of $150,000 from School Choice to cover an overage in health insurance. So at this point, healthcare break even, which is, it's great news. Typically, Avi works his magic and he gets that number down below um, our more conservative estimate. But I think, um, from the reports that we were getting about where we were trending in terms of usage, coming in on target is a win for us this year. So we're gonna put that one in the win column. We have a few new items and a couple of emerging items that we're watching toward the end of the year. So when we were talking about budget adoption, we weren't watching what's happening, um, in Europe right now. And we weren't dealing with the ramifications of the spiking fuel prices. So not in our win column is we have utilities contracts that are up for renewal in December of, of this year of '22. And, um, Avi reports that we're looking at a 50% greater than our current, a 50% increase to our current fixed cost, uh, ballparking a, a potential unbudgeted increase of 75 to 125K. This is back in the envelope. I know Avi's gonna go and build a model at some point and come up with a more exact number, but this is kind of taking a quick look at where our contracts are and the components of it and what this might look like. Now, December, things move quickly. It could be 10 times better, it could be 10 times worse. We don't really know based on the information that's before us. We're watching, um, this item to see if it has an impact on the FY23 budget. Special education, TAs, that should be TAs, not TA. We're tracking the potential for four additional one-on-one aides to comply with IEP requirements for next year. Um, that could look, be giving us an increase of about 120K over our current budgeted TA line. Um, we'll know for certain by the end of the year. But this is, they're prescriptive. So we are going to need to either make some adjustments to existing staffing to create an opportunity to bring these folks on, or we're gonna have to, we'll have to have that discussion about how we're going to fund it. And then this one probably should have been second in line, but a transportation fuel surcharge within our, uh, busing contracts. There's a, uh, there's a clause that if the price of gas goes up, uh, 20%, uh, 20 cents over the per gallon cost at the time of the contract, that there's a charge passed on to us. Again, this is on our to-do list, um, in terms of a more detailed assessment. But I think, again, back of the envelope, just for general ed buses, so those are our daily bus runs, something in the ballpark of 20K. That doesn't account for our athletics buses, which are much longer runs or our, um, or the impact to special education transportation, which again, we have runs going all over the state. So, um, no definitive news, but these items together add up to a potential for an additional $245,000 in spending for next year that's not directly accounted for in the budget. Which is why I kind of said, put a pin on a couple of our, our big picture thoughts earlier. I think we need to watch these over the next eight weeks to see where we are, um, see where things come in. But, you know, and, and Avi, please jump in. Tip, typically, everything feels very tight this year, like we're to the penny, moving things around on different lines to make it all balance and work. So this is a little stressful because we're not going to get three points off of healthcare to backstop these expenditures. So we're not really sure. I mean, I think we're back in the same conversation of do we use reserves? Do we make additional cuts? Um, or do we do a combination of the two? Should these emerge as actual costs? And I think the confidence level on the special education TAs is very high. That these are going to be needed and our hope is that it's not more than four. So Avi, do you want to share your expertise?
Um, well, I guess I, let me just start with utilities and just say that this is an area we haven't discussed quite a bit in recent years. It's usually been a source of positive budget surprise, um, or I wouldn't say surprise, positive budget news. We engage, uh, a purchasing, uh, with a purchasing consortium called Power Options. They service nonprofits in higher education. And, uh, they're very experienced at helping you to navigate, uh, fixed price contracts. They do essentially bulk purchasing. So we've done a lot over the past 10 years to kind of try to do the best we can on it. One of the reasons we're looking at increases is because we have very favorable rates, which is why we haven't been talking about utilities in prior budget seasons for really quite some time. And generally, the strategy is when the economy starts to have issues, that's a great time to buy, which we have, uh, or to lock in, which is what we've done based on the advice of a third-party advisor. So, uh, we, we're just watching the market right now. You know, generally you try not to buy in the winter or in the middle of the summer when utilities for air conditioning in the summer or winter for heating and, and lighting are at their peak. So we're just gonna have to keep an eye, we, we have a daily market watch set up. War is really not helping with, uh, one of the larger energy producers in the world that we've all seen at the pump. So some of this is just the type of thing that I, I think has been a little hard to predict. Uh, and it's really, like I said, we've had a very good run of this. So I'm hopeful we can do better than this, but it's just too early to say. And we have not had a fuel surcharge, I think, in this district except for maybe one time in the past 10 to 12 years. So these are really things that are very unusual, um, which is why they haven't really been part of our initial budget process. But certainly seeing events unfold in Ukraine brought both of those two items onto our list. So I think I'll leave it at that. And happy to answer any questions if people have them.
Thanks, Avi. Does anybody have questions about the horrible budget? Teresa has a question.
You'll be shocked, I, yeah, I have questions. So the, the special education, help, help me understand if I'm wrong, but we kind of took the gamble on that with, with our budget, right? Or was this in a prior budget that we said, we're gonna, we're gonna include kind of this, but we know it may be over. So that's kind of something that in my head, it's like, we had that conversation and we knew it. My question is about the utilities and the transportation where that's something. we had that conversation and we knew it. My question is about the utilities and the transportation where that's something that's coming out of the market, you know, partly due to world conditions. Is are there any state or federal dollars we might be able to anticipate helping districts? Surely we're not alone in this. Is there anything, anyone hearing anything at all? Anything at all?
I have heard nothing on support for districts on energy prices.
So I was at a meeting on Friday, Teresa, where I'm the one asking all the questions.
Excellent.
And and the superintendent in Triton is really involved in a state-level committee on the transportation issue in busing. So we don't have any answers, but we were raising similar questions, which is, you know, there's always the ongoing debate of how they fund regional transportation and will we ever get closer to our our full reimbursement? And one of the things we're going to try to pose is, you know, could the state kick in something to help districts who get slammed with the surcharge? Because the rural districts are really going to get hit hard unless they have different contracts than we do. But I can imagine this is going to emerge as a real issue for Western Mass in those large regions. So maybe. And I think if we get it, it will be in the it'll be the field surcharge area where they might try to do something to support us.
Okay.
But who knows where they're going to be with the ramifications? Yeah. That's a question we're asking and we're watching.
Okay.
Just Teresa's other thing, well, the special education TAs, I don't think we were holding a space for that. I think maybe we're thinking about out-of-district placements that we had been.
Maybe we were. We looked at so many budget scenarios.
I know.
The early ones said, let's just take it out and we'll take it as it comes. And then as we, when we proposed that, and then we were going to another level of cuts, we said, no, it's like it's starting to feel like games. So we put it all back in. So this is really a direct add over. So one thing we'll watch till the end of the year is, you know, do does one of the proposed out-of-district, potential out-of-district placements not materialize? And if it doesn't, is that a way we can offset this cost? I guess I'm just trying to signal there are still a lot of moving parts and most of the parts you're moving aren't moving in the right direction. So I I just caution trying to do too many things right now when they're still up in the air.
So.
I just want to add, which I didn't get to say before, is that I think it's important to look at this in a multi-year context, which is that when you, you know, are closer to a revenue correction, like say five years ago, six years ago, you just re-upped your budget. You're not really living at the tightest level that you are. Right now, when we're potentially a year away from a revenue correction, you know, you see it in the amount of reserves that have increased. That really is an indication to you of the lack of places to go for reductions and the lack of ability to absorb these types of things. So I just think that this is a year where, you know, if you had a same type of chart like this three years ago, I think it would be a little less concerning because you'd feel like the budget wasn't so razor-tight and you could absorb it. And really, you know, this is just more of what happens at the end of that cycle. So all the more reason why I think we need to get to a point where a revenue correction can happen. So we're not looking at every potential budget surprise. In a normal year, we manage the good and the bad. We just don't have a lot of cushion left.
So is what has happened is that we have gotten to the sort of the end of this cycle and just right at that same time, Essex's, the apportionment fell.
Yep.
Essex for two years in a row, which really triggered alarm bells for the town of Essex.
Yeah, that timing.
And a war.
Right.
Timing is for the proportion.
I mean, I think if we go back to our old mantra, I we do not have a spending problem. We do have some structural problems that present themselves cyclically. You know, if my one wish and it appears in our in our goals is just to have stability, to have some common agreement on what those targets are and then live with those agreements and try to codify those agreements so they live beyond you know, the set of people that set them.
Yes.
Because this is this is very hard. I mean, you see the emotion. The kids did a fantastic job tonight. You know, the teachers are doing a great job advocating. And I don't really think any, none of us disagree on the value of the programming. I think we all have different responsibility in making in making some decisions about how to make the budget run, but we're just at a place where we are the budget isn't only tight, the program's tight, and we're working in the discretionary area, but there's less and less in the discretionary area that's acceptable for tightening. So we're kind of hitting our breaking point, plus all of those other factors that you mentioned. It's been a rough few years. And, you know, I I thank Eric for raising it over and over again. This is the worst possible time that we should be reducing services.
Yep. All right. Can I ask a question about that then? And so we've got kind of a couple of different topics happening now, but this is when it has to be, right? This is the messy part. So if we're talking about the idea of, you know, that we do all agree of the value, I actually am curious because in in other conversations, I have heard you saying, I hate to put you on the spot, but it's kind of what I have to do, Pam, say, we don't have data either way, really, about the you know, about the elementary language program that.
We haven't been, we haven't been collecting data.
Okay, so.
We have a lot of anecdotal support for it. And some some items were raised tonight that I think we could do some greater digging on in terms of the K-12 continuum in some other districts.
Yeah.
But if you're asking me to present you a chart that shows a direct correlation between the elementary program and reaching AP, I don't have that.
Okay.
Maybe, you know.
I can understand, but just it's just a different viewpoint that we received tonight, you know, and in emails. And so I I just I am concerned about the cost of it to the the full spectrum and no, none of us wants to make any cuts. We know that, but I have bigger concerns tonight than I did previously. At the same time, I can I can see this is ugly. Can I? Oh, sorry. One other thing. On the the chart you listed first, the kind of recap of the where the budget is. So in that staffing and program reductions, so this is reflecting column C that we had voted on to adopt. So why does it? I know it doesn't show the the dollar value, but I just want to be clear that move instrumental music lessons to fee for service. That was a column B thing. So that's not something that's still being considered, or are you saying in this chart that that is being considered?
Was it was removed from column C, so there's no value next to it. It was.
That's why. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't something I was missing. Okay.
But I it seems like what Pam was saying earlier with the additional $245,000 in expenses, we're seeing we might have to make additional cuts.
Actually.
Or use additional reserves.
So that brings back to the school choice question. That certainly informs my vote.
That would probably, would you like us to take a straw poll on the school choice situation now? It doesn't have to be a binding vote, but we could just get a test the waters.
I'm fine with testing the waters, but I don't want to push people. It's like nine.
Let's do a little exit ticket, like you can say you're ready to leave and also whether or not you would you think you might support school choice.
We still have school committee comment after this. You know that.
We do also have school committee comment. Okay, we'll do a quick, like, end of the meeting ticket. Eric, do you, would you potentially support school choice at this point?
Yes, I would.
Matt?
Yes, and that's supported up to the maximum.
Kate?
Yes, at the grade levels and to the max capacity recommended by Pam.
Teresa Teresa already said she'd support it now based on what she just heard. Do you want to say that for yourself, Teresa?
I would support it now based on what I just heard, and in particular, so that we could really consider this foreign language thing on its merits rather than budget, if possible.
Ken?
I vote we wrap this up soon, but I'm in support of the foreign or the not foreign language, the school choice.
As we've talked. Support of foreign language.
Yes, I am a supporter of foreign language.
All right. Okay. A school committee comment.
Wait, but before we stop that, so what do we need to do moving forward for our next meeting? Are we just thinking more on this? Or Pam, are you going to tell us more?
I'll bring school choice back to you with ready to vote because I think if we vote on the fifth, I can get it taken care of before the April break. That will give me enough time to have the lottery and notify everybody. If the budget, I think it's a wait and watch. And my my question is, what other information can I go get for you to help you with your decision-making? I guess I would say I can both see value and understand the need to make the reduction. Like I can, I'm okay with those two thoughts in my head at the same time and in having to make that difficult recommendation.
But we don't have to vote on that, right? We already voted on the budget and technically how that budget is met is in your hands.
Well, you voted the reduction in foreign language. But we voted with potential for further discussion. So I'm just asking right now is if we want to continue the discussion, is there something beyond the the testament testimony that you had that you would like to see that I can try to connect with some other districts on to help inform your feelings?
I think information is helpful, but Mrs. McGaughn sent us a really, really informative email that I didn't have time to dig into all the links that she sent today, but she had really done a ton of research on that. So I think we could. I mean, we could probably should all read that really thoroughly for homework.
And I and agreed. And also, the one thing that I didn't see in there, but if it was, I'll go back and follow. But the the information I would like is in this, if there are districts that have discontinued this in recent years, were there specific impacts that they have now tracked? Let's see what this actually means.
That is a good and very specific question.
I would add that if we're if we're looking at data and we're trying to consider, you know, I think that there's no argument that says, oh, yeah, this is not a useful program at any level. But I would, I'm wondering how much language exposure students need at the elementary level in order to gain those advantages.
I think one of the things that the kids were saying, they were talking a lot, they had clearly done a lot of research and some of them have been taking some psychology classes. And one of the things they talked about was the critical period, which they referred to as being around age 11. And I think that one of the things that we had talked about was adding back in just the sixth grade of the language exploratory, which wouldn't those kids be the 11-year-olds?
Fifth, I think that's fifth grade. Right? Kids turn, well, yes, I think six is 11 to 12. You're right.
So then maybe we should have the breakdown on that, too. If things are as tight as they seem to be looking and we're going to try to add some back in, maybe some is better than none.
I think the question that I walked away with is there's a feeling that the there's a connection being made to the access to the elementary exploratory program produces the AP results in the end. And, you know, I would look at some schools to see if you don't have elementary, are you, what's your success rate with?
Yeah. Well, I mean, if we're going to really get picky about it, my kids take French, and so they didn't obviously have elementary school French, but they're doing great in French. I mean, they're the languages are similar. I think that elementary school Spanish probably informs their success in high school French to some degree.
All right. So I'm happy to do a little more digging if you feel like it's going to be helpful to you.
Yeah.
It would be helpful to me because my concern, again, is is doing this on the merits of of it, not only on the budget.
And you don't have to answer it now. You can always email me suggestions. Let's say the the argument tips you into wanting to put it back in. Where would you like to look to have something removed?
Yeah.
I'll take that on buses. Like, we could walk to school.
Only if we get a safe routes to school program in Essex.
Need to work on that with the town of Essex.
I know.
Unlike other districts, we are regional and required to provide buses to all.
I was I was being.
I know.
Character, I know, I was being flip. I'm sorry. It's late. It's 9:28. Okay, is there any school committee comment before we end the meeting?
You say yours first, sir.
A reminder that, well, on the 29th, I believe there's going to be a meeting with the Pam and Avi are going to be joining the Essex Finance Committee, and I'm planning to attend that. If am I wrong? Pam's looking at me like I'm crazy.
No, you're right.
I'm planning to be there. I don't think the whole school committee needs to be there. I don't think we need to be, but if I maybe we will need to post it if more than four of us are going to be there. So Pam, do you want us all to be there?
I think the more the merrier.
Okay, so.
Some cross-town representation would probably be great.
It would probably be smart. So maybe we should send an email poll around and ask if people are able to come. It's next Tuesday. So I mean, not next Tuesday, it's Tuesday, the 29th. That's a Tuesday, which is often our school committee meeting, but I not everybody has to go. But if we're going to have a quorum, we need to post it.
What what time?
I don't know that they've set a time.
Is there any harm in just posting it, hoping that knowing that people might not know right now whether they can make it?
No, that's a good point. We will we will put it in and we will post it as a meeting and then we'll see who can come. All right, Teresa, did you have a comment?
I do. And this is for all of us, well, minus three of you potentially. So just a reminder to our committee and to anyone left listening that we have three people up for reelection and we've yet to address in public meeting whether those people are choosing to run for reelection or not, but in any case, it is the season for people to be pulling papers to run for school committee right now. And so that means we have the potential for a lot of change here. And so those of us left, number one, we need to be thinking about that. We need to be thinking about learning from the people who are potentially leaving about what it is they do on their subcommittees because we're going to have to reorganize if people don't come back. And we are also going to have to be ready to help new people understand those roles if our incumbents either choose not to run for reelection or run and lose. But that is a big thing that we need to be starting to think about and talking about openly.
I'm not running for school committee again, but Jake Foster is running for school committee in Essex.
I didn't mean boo to Jake. I just meant boo to Sarah.
That's fine.
I also would really like, and and I am supportive of Jake, and he knows that I signed his papers, but I also, I mean, the last few years, we have all walked into our positions and it would be really great if we had people with, you know, a little bit more competition perhaps.
We're totally preaching to the choir because I don't think very many people are left on this call, but I will, I drove through Hamilton today and there are a lot of people running for select board and school committee and Hamilton Glenham. They've got their signs.
It's a web pages. I know.
It's a good time to get involved. All right, um, do I, does anybody else have a school committee comment? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved Warnock.
Second?
Second, Eric.
Great. Eric, are you a yes?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Okay, I'm also a yes. Thank you all for hanging in there. I'm sorry it was so long tonight.